Great, this is the July 14th meeting of the Concord Select Board. I'm Mark Howell. I will take the role.
Mr. McKenna?
Here.
Myself, David Deville here.
Here.
Mary?
Here.
Paul?
And Paul, sorry.
I'm here.
All members are present. Very good. Okay, as is our practice, we're going to begin with public comments. Public comments are three minutes per person. Please use the podium or... And start with your name. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand. And we'll allow about 15 minutes for public comments. Public comments are for items not on the agenda, which means that if you wish to comment on Agenda Item Number Four, the response to hateful acts and expression, you should hold until we invite comments on that, which we will offer after the presentation and discussion on that same topic. Anytime not used in the general public comment period will be added to that as needed. Okay. Do we have any public comments of a general nature for items not on the agenda? Anybody on Zoom? Don't see any? Okay. I've got yourself 10 minutes. Thanks. Okay, the consent agenda, please.
All right, I'll make a motion that we improve the consent agenda as provided.
Second.
Your second. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I'd like to thank the Concord Free Public Library.
We can't hear you.
Okay.
I'd like to talk now, thank the Friends of the Concord Free Public Library for the gift of $30,000 for the library.
Thank you. All right. Select Board appointments, please.
Paul, we can... Teresa Hubsher, younger, 262 Central Street, as an Associate Member to the Library Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2028. And then move to appoint Barbara Ewan of 49 Adams Road to the Concord Cultural Council for a term to expire May 31st, 2028. Move to appoint Adam Stark of 154 Lincoln Road, Unit 1, to the Economic Vitality Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2028. Move to appoint Adam Stark of 154 Lincoln Road, Unit 1, to the Economic Vitality Committee for a term to expire May 31st, 2028. Move to appoint Judith Long of 94 Nurse Nakhill Road to the Land Use Working Group for a term to expire at the conclusion of the work outlined in the charge. Second?
Second.
Thank you. Any comments? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay. That brings us to the reason that I suspect most of you are here this evening. A statement and discussion on public comment and public comments on proposed action plans in response to hateful acts and expressions in Concord. And I'd like to open this by just observing that self-reflection is difficult, but necessary if we're going to find workable approaches to these challenges. Pain, fear, ignorance, anger must be addressed with empathy, compassion, education, and love. I call on everyone to consider not just what's wrong, but what role they can play in learning and improvement. The DEI Commission has already made a start. We'll now listen to what they have proposed and try to build on it. We'll have a discussion amongst the Select Board, and then we'll entertain comments. Thank you. And we have Rose Craxley and Nancy Brown from the DEI Commission. Please come forward and let's make sure you can be here heard. The DEI Commission has already made a start. We'll now listen to what they have proposed and try to build on it. We'll have a discussion amongst the Select Board, and then we'll entertain comments. Thank you. And we have Rose Craxley and Nancy Brown from the DEI Commission. Please come forward and let's make sure you can be here heard. I can, but that's probably not the only person. Can you hear them on Zoom, Jess?
We cannot hear them in the overflow room.
All right, we're going to do a mic check in here and see how we're doing.
Test, test.
Okay.
Yes, we heard that again.
Great. Okay. So I think you guys will share that, or we can slide this other one over. Jess, please.
Co-chair of the Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission. Thanking the Select Board for providing us an opportunity to address challenges facing not only our country, but our...
Sorry, it's cutting out. We still can't quite hear in the overflow room.
Let me...
Yes.
I'll hold it closer.
Yes, that's perfect.
Let me start again.
But really close.
Stay there. Okay.
Again. My name is Nancy Brown, and I am co-chair of the DEI Commission. We would like to begin by thanking the Select Board for providing us an opportunity to address challenges that are facing not only our country, but our community as well. Upon moving to Concord eight years ago, I joined the League of Women Voters, an organization which I had been part of for over 50 years. Following the murder of George Floyd, I helped the League form a Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Committee. I am also a member of Karam Shalom and have been involved with the synagogue's efforts to fight antisemitism and other forms of hate. For reasons we do not need to go into here, racism and bigotry have raised their ugly heads in a blatant and frightening manner that takes us back 50 years or more to a time which I can recall, but was before most of the folks in this room were adults. Personally, I found this shocking and extremely discouraging. I moved to Massachusetts eight years ago and was invited to be moving closer to family, but also to a town that had a powerful Revolutionary War history and, in my mind, was famous for its championing of freedom and the rights of all citizens. In retrospect, I suppose I was naive in thinking that Concord would be immune to antisemitism and other forms of hatred. As you know, there was an incident in April involving antisemitic graffiti at the state park. Perhaps even more disturbing than the incident itself was the fact that it was not immediately publicized and addressed. Whether intentionally or due to the press of other matters, this incident and other acts of antisemitism and bias were not handled in a manner that gives all of us Concordians and visitors confidence that they are truly welcome. On June 24th of this year, the DEI Commission issued a statement condemning acts of antisemitism. The statement read as follows. "The Concord Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Commission unequivocally condemns the recent acts of antisemitism, racism, homophobia, and other expressions of hate that have occurred in our community, including the disturbing graffiti and hate speech incidents reported at Concord Carlisle High School and other public spaces. These acts are not isolated. They are symptoms of broader systemic harms that marginalize and traumatize our neighbors, especially those who are Jewish, Black, Indigenous, LGBTQ+, immigrants, and members of historically excluded communities." I believe this statement accurately describes the situation we are confronting. Statements alone are not enough. It is time to mobilize as a community. Churches, synagogues, and other organizations, such as the Human Rights Council, have taken a stand and should be our allies. The Human Rights Council is offering active bystander training on July 23rd at 5:00 to 8:00 p.m. Harvey Wheeler. And this will be the first of several workshops, and I hope any of you will... We would love to see the Select Board join with us and adopt a leadership role in the effort to foster a community that fights antisemitism and bigotry of all sorts and welcomes all who choose to work, live, or visit Concord. Rose will provide us with thoughts on more specific ways we can address these problems.
Good evening, members of the Select Board and community. My name is Rose Felix Craxley, and I serve as co-chair for the DEI Commission. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening. We're here to share highlights from our proposed community action plan to address hate and bias, a framework rooted in community input, lived experience, and our shared responsibility to uphold safety, equity, and belonging across Concord. This plan responds to a pattern of harmful incidents in our town, acts of antisemitism, racism, and anti-LGBTQ+ bias that have impacted our neighbors, our schools, and our sense of community. These events have caused real harm and demand a coordinated, caring, and sustained response. Alongside this plan, the DEI Commission is also updating our charge to better reflect Concord's current needs and to strengthen our ability to partner across sectors in building a more inclusive town. The action plan outlines five key focus areas. Number one. Public education and community dialogue. Host a town-wide restorative healing forum in partnership with impacted communities and local organizations. Launch a Concord Against Hate campaign across schools, faith communities, and public forums addressing antisemitism, racism, and LGBTQ+ rights. Require annual anti-bias and anti-hate training for all town employees, public officials, and school staff. Number two. Reporting and accountability. Establishing a confidential, town-wide incident reporting system for hate and bias incidents with clear response and follow-up protocols. Provide regular public updates to ensure transparency and build trust. Number three. Mental health and support services. Expanding access to trauma-informed mental health care for students, families, educators, and town staff. Fund culturally responsive counseling services, prioritizing support for historically marginalized communities, including youth and elders. Number four. Policy and structural change. Conduct a town-wide equity audit and school policies focused on racial, religious, and gender equity. Advocate for a permanent DEI director, as we voted on at town meeting in 2023, with dedicated resources to coordinate and advance this work townwide. Number five. Partnership and solidarity. Build a regional coalition with neighboring towns, nonprofits, advocacy groups, and faith-based organizations. Support intergenerational and intercultural programming that deepens relationships and strengthens our collective resilience. This plan offers a path forward, one that centers healing, accountability, and connection. It reflects the calls we've heard and the outcry we've heard from Concord residents, students, and families for the town to move and take action with care and integrity. Tonight, we respectfully ask the Select Board to join forces and in partnership with us to endorse the direction of this plan, to support its implementation across town departments, and join us in mobilizing the broader community to ensure that every person in Concord feels safe, valued, and at home. Thank you for your leadership and partnership. We welcome your feedback, your questions, collaboration as we move forward together.
Thank you, Rose. Thank you, Nancy. I think we hear the call to action very clearly. And so I'm on an open space right now for us as a board to try to begin to map a way forward. I really am already aware that we've had offers of partnership from the school committee, from the Human Rights Council, from the DEI Commission. And I think what remains to be done here is to begin to address how we might move forward from here, what suggestions we can gather, and what concrete steps we're going to take in the immediate future as we try to navigate these very challenging waters. So I'm interested in the thoughts from the board, and let's have that discussion.
Yeah. So I think the components of the plan are exactly the right components. The key is implementing them on a townwide basis. I think the chair is correct. I think the... We are one community. We're not a school community. We are one community. I think that realization, although it's apparent to a lot of us, hasn't always been the case. The schools have to deal with specific issues related, for example, to this complaint. But I think more generally, I think the community needs to be involved in education, and we have to be very transparent in what's going on in town. Because I think education is only successful if people are aware of what's going on. And so the data collection, as painful as it might be, and there's a range of data, a range of incidents, I think all of those have to come to light. And only if they come to light can we act and be aware of our frailties and where, you know, the needs for improvement. So I'm very much focused on the need for communicating to the general public on what's going on. And a lot of these incidents happen in the schools, but there are incidents that happen outside of the schools. And I think we need to treat this as a community issue going forward. And I think the Select Board, I think, is, at least from my point of view and others I've spoken to, realize the need to take leadership. The question is, how exactly is our role in this leadership versus other entities in town? The DEI Commission, the school committee, the DEIB within the schools? So I think we need to have more conversations and kind of flesh that all out to move together. Because I think we do have to move together on this. We're not... We are one community.
I certainly support it as well. I think we absolutely have to take... Sorry, I have to keep the mic...
Sorry. I just want to reiterate everything that you said, Paul. I think it's very, very important that the Select Board take a leadership role and start putting some groups together to start taking some action. I'm hearing that there's other people that have volunteered or groups that have volunteered. I'm not privy to all of them, so if some of you know, that would be helpful. I also want to make sure that we do collaborate effectively with the schools, and I see some of the school committee here, which is fantastic. I don't know how we move this forward, so I would look to some ideas from the community, and Rose and Nancy have already given us some. But are there other thoughts from other board members who've spoken to people? I'm not sure.
I want to echo what my colleagues have said. I've been skeptical of some of the recommendations of the committee in the past, but I see now that we need it. It's clear to me that we need it. I don't know, some of you might have read the editorial in the Boston Globe recently, and they were talking... What struck me when I read that editorial was that there are teachers and there are people who want to help, and they don't know what to say. They don't know what to do. And so that, to me, meant that training, the required training that you outlined in your list is one of... Would be one of my priorities moving forward. Training for staff, training for officials. So I completely support doing that almost like first thing. But I think we have a challenge ahead of us as far as prioritizing many of the things that we've got in front of us. And pivotal to this is getting the right person as our DEI. So that's pivotal. So, you know, I think that's something that we really need to think about. How do we go about recruiting that person? How do we get the right person? So those are my two thoughts, training and the right person.
When you say the right person, Mary, are you talking about someone to help bring a coalition groups together? Or the DEI director that was mentioned? I just wanted to be clear in what you were suggesting.
I think I'm expecting this person to do all of the above, which I don't even know. See, that's what I... I mean, we've got a DEI director in the schools already, right? We've got religious leaders in town. We've got officials. We've got a lot of good intentions. How do we... I think, to me, the point, how do we coordinate all of that together to make meaningful action? Instead of... In addition to our good intentions, how do we take effective action? So again, I'll repeat that I think training is probably one of the most important things to do. But we've got a challenge. I mean, we've made a big step, I think, as a community, recognizing that we have a problem. How do we take the most effective action?
Yeah, I mean, I... Look, I think that, you know, I'll echo the concerns about things that have happened and the, you know, the need to do some things more, more things and do them differently going forward. I think it's a great list. I view it as kind of a... You know, it's a... There's 11 things here, right? Some cost money, some don't. Some are probably easy to do, some are harder to do. So, you know, I think it's something that's going to take some work, right? To kind of go through it and sort of say, hey, you know what? How do we prioritize this? And the biggest thing is doing it in conjunction with the school committee, in conjunction with DEI. But, you know, the town wants, is going to... I believe the sentiment and, you know, I think, you know, we're going to have to come up with a plan because doing nothing is not an option, right? So it's like, okay, you know what? I don't know that I would necessarily sit here and say, hey, like all 11 things, boom, let's just go do them all, right? But we gotta, we gotta look at it. We gotta look at it together, and we gotta say what's going to make the most sense here to, you know, prioritize and get after, right? I think if there's places where we can look at examples of maybe what's been done in some other places successfully, right? Or where there's been some things that maybe have been tried that weren't so successful that we could learn from and say, hey, wait, you know what? That while we tried that, that maybe had some, you know, effects we didn't, we weren't counting on. So I think also just things we can, you know, learn from as well is going to be important, right? To try to do, so.
So yes, thank you for those comments. I think that we already have a little bit of a head start in that we have the DEI Commission. We also have, obviously, an engaged community that wants to assist us with this. I think we do need to solicit those suggestions. I'm going to offer one concrete way. We have an email address, dei@concordma.gov, where we're already ready to receive those. In my mind, it does sort of break down into two primary tracks, of which a lot of these things fit in. The one track is the protocols. How do we respond? How do we communicate? How do we collect the data that we need to understand exactly where we are and enable ourselves to either compare ourselves to peer communities or others and really get a handle on that? I have a lingering concern that the broader Concord community, as opposed to the schools, has essentially had no tracking of these kinds of issues. So we're not necessarily as aware of the extent to which these incidents are taking place outside of the school. And that could cause us to focus successfully on the school. As a Select Board, we have a relatively limited role in the school. That is the purview of the school committee. But we're here to support and, in fact, I think even lead in this conversation because we have to treat this as an overall community issue that we're going to develop a community response to. Beyond that, there are levels, different levels of education and understanding of what has been transpiring so far. And I think that education engagement, the opportunity for people to tell their stories and to respond to the information that they're getting about it is the other sort of major track. I don't think we necessarily have to wait to hire somebody to go help us with that. I think that we have expertise in the community. And so by mentioning that email address, I'm really saying, if you, members of the community that are listening to this, have some expertise, some skills, or some experience that you want to lend to this effort, I would suggest that you send in that information and let us begin to process it so that we can come up with these concrete actions. I think those are our primary two steps or two tracks that we want to get on. And once we, once we start down those roads, I think it'll become apparent what we can do sooner and what might take a little bit more time to either provide resources for or to simply schedule.
Can I just say one thing? At the risk of being redone, I think this issue of awareness, community awareness and data, you know, just the nature, frequency of these incidents, I think we have to know that. And when I say these incidents, we're not just talking about antisemitism. We're talking about racial incidents, homophobic. We're talking about the range of hate incidents. I think we all, you know, let's put those all in the same hateful bucket. I do think it's the next step, we should discuss it. I think we need to get the school committee and the Select Board in the room at the same time. We've all had one-off conversations, but I think we all need to agree how to do it, how to move together. And so that may be at least a administrative step.
I think so, too. And, you know, I will say that I've been contacted by the chair, and we will work to set that up. Okay. Any other further comments? I know there's a lot of people that would like to say, would like to speak to this, so I'm going to be a little generous with the time. Town meeting rules apply. You'll get three minutes. Recognize that we are the Select Board, so we will do best if your comments can be addressed in a way that are actionable by us rather than others and talk to the community at large rather than specific sub-communities, which we may or may not have a direct role in administering. So with that, I'll open it up to public comments. If you want to make a public comment, please come to the podium over here. We'll make sure that you're set up with a microphone. If you're on Zoom, raise your hand, and we'll take some comments there. And thank you for being here tonight. I'll just observe for the people who are not on Zoom and don't necessarily have a view of this room. We have 43 people on Zoom. We have at least that many here in the room. And we have an overflow room. So this is an impressive turnout, and I thank you for your attention. Please.
Mark, just so you're aware, we're going to have probably three to five people in the overflow room that are going to speak. Just so you're aware, I put my hand up, but that's how many we have that have indicated they might like to say something.
Thank you. And we have this scheduled to go till about 6... Yeah.
One more time.
6:40. I'll probably let it go a little bit longer, but...
Yeah, sorry, this is our first time.
Yeah. Well, we're just testing that out. We're over here tonight because the air conditioning in the townhouse is broken, so we appreciate everybody finding us. Okay.
Pass the mic.
All right.
Works, yeah.
Works, yeah.
Okay, please.
Virginia Lee, one sixty-two Plainfield Road. Um, I'm former chief of the Civil Rights and Civil Liberties Division of the Massachusetts Department of the Attorney General. And it used to be my job to lead this type of, uh, uh, issue, uh, for the Attorney General's office. The first thing I wanted to mention is that you have to call the behavior by what it is. Um, the globe, not the globe, excuse me. The bridge had it wrong when they called hateful incidents. These are hate incidents. And you might check out also your, your, um, your program. You use the word hateful and it's certainly understandable, but these are really serious, terrible situations. And you have to call it out for what it is. These are hate crimes, hate incidents, hate speech, that kind of thing. So I just wanted to get us speaking in the right, in the right, using the right terms. Um, there, I, I thought that the D E I's proposal was fantastic. Training is the way, way to go on this. Um, also I wanted to mention that you normally include the, um, law enforcement in these kinds of, uh, matters. Um, the state law, um, both civilly and criminally calls, uh, uh, describes this, these types of situations as threats, intimidation or coercion. You don't need to beat somebody up. You know, if you're threatening people, coercing people, it's a hate incident. As to whether or not it rises to the level of a crime, that's something different. The Boston Police Department has a civil rights unit has, who has worked on this for, you know, since the seventies. And they have lots of templates as to how it should be handled from that perspective. The, uh, the Concord Police Department has restorative justice, which might be more appropriate if you, if it rises to this level for kids. Uh, but at any rate, people have dealt with this before. It's not a mystery. Uh, there are professionals and everyday people that know how to do, deal with it. I commend the organization that's calling in quab and mediation uh, to teach us how to handle as bystanders, when you see somebody who's a bully, um, what you should do. It makes a big difference if the community as a whole sees things that are happening and then knows how to direct the bully in such a way that you diffuse the situation and protect the victim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next in the room.
Uh, my name is David Yoken and, um, I live at One Ridge Way Road. Um, my wife and I moved to Concord fifteen years ago, drawn to an idyllic town that celebrates its outsized place in American history where ideals of liberty and moral courage still echo today. Um, yet today, many Jewish families, mine included, are asking whether Concord still is up to that promise and whether we should continue to call this town our home. Nationwide, more than nine thousand antisemitic acts were reported last year, an alarming nine hundred percent increase in a decade. We like to think that that can't happen in an enlightened town like Concord, but it has. This spring, a swastika, school property went unannounced and unreported for weeks. A tenth grader fled our high school after enduring years of antisemitic bullying. National organizations now spotlight Concord for the near complete silence from school leadership and their failure to take meaningful action. My fourteen-year-old, who starts at C C H X next month, experienced antisemitism firsthand during the eighth grade Washington D C trip, uh, that took place a few, few months ago, when another student, uh, gave him a Heil Hitler salute. Uh, what am I supposed to tell him on his first day of high school? Don't let anyone know you're Jewish? I appreciate the D E I Commission's five-point action plan, but tonight as a parent who must reassure his children, I urge you to table the plan until you can close critical gaps. First, name the hatred. When antisemitic incidents occur, condemn antisemitism explicitly and swiftly. Vague pledges to fight all injustice leave our community feeling invisible and unheard. Second, shine a light. Launch the promised anti-hate crime reporting portal for the town, but also commit to publishing regular reports on incidents, investigations and outcomes, so the community can review and transparently understand what is happening in Concord. Trust that thrives at sunlight. Fourth, include us. Ensure that D E I truly includes and protects the Jewish community. We cannot be an afterthought in diversity efforts. These additions would, would transform a good plan into a model for other communities. We need action now, not after another swastika appears, not after another Jewish student is forced to flee our schools, or worse, physical violence. Every child in Concord deserves the dignity to walk their school hallways without fear. My son deserves to wear his identity with pride, not hide it for safety. The Jewish community stands ready to partner with you and make Concord a model for more, of moral courage and commitment. Will you stand with us? Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take one more in here and then we're gonna go to the overflow room. No, we'll take one more in here.
My name is Stella Kaplowitz and I'm a graduate of the C C H S class of twenty twenty-five. And while the recent reports in the press concern the antisemitic graffiti, hate speech and bullying perpetrated by students of the Concord Carlisle School District, not much is mentioned about the teachers, aside from their unfortunate inaction to managing these situations. In my experience, however, the antisemitism I have witnessed firsthand has come from members of the faculty and staff, which I am incredibly disturbed by, given how the often overlooked behavior of the teachers ultimately enables and even encourages those students to spread hatred with no fear of repercussions. In my sophomore year, my U S history teacher justified his antisemitic remarks to me by bringing up David, his Jewish brother-in-law. I do not know who this David is or if he even exists, but I was disgusted at the fact that an experienced educator would make such a tone-deaf statement rather than take responsibility for his offensive comments. The closest I got to an apology was that he was sorry for making me feel that way, but he was not able to grasp what it was that upset me, a direct quote from the email I received from him. The focus was never on what the teacher said, but instead on my reaction. Never did the other members of the C C staff and administration involved make any effort to hold him accountable, but they certainly made sure that I had to sit through multiple uncomfortable meetings with this teacher in the hopes that I would move past the misunderstanding until I was finally allowed to switch out of his class. Later in the year, multiple other students reported to me that during the unit on World War Two, this teacher encouraged the class to not just focus on the negatives of Hitler's regime, but to also acknowledge the positive contributions, such as his great impact on the German economy. This same man continues to be celebrated at C C as a beloved social studies teacher. This school year, after it became impossible to ignore the repeated antisemitic graffiti at the high school, the administration's solution was to hold an in-school assembly about the swastika as a symbol of hate. There obviously was not much screening involved in hiring the speaker, who seemed to be the first Jewish person the district could find that was willing to present. This woman provided common knowledge and outdated information while maintaining a defensive and accusatory tone throughout and dismissing legitimate questions from students. I was the most appalled, however, by the inappropriate behavior of a member of the C C staff attending this assembly. After the speaker put up a list of data demonstrating the horrific increase in antisemitism at high schools and universities specifically, which was followed by an anecdote from a classmate of mine about his sibling being hindered from attending some of his college classes simply for being Jewish, a teacher shouted out that every time someone says free Palestine on a college campus, the statistics go up and are therefore exaggerated. Her public claim minimized everything high school and college students have endured, diminishing the significance of a very real and already neglected concern across the country. To make matters worse, nearly everyone in the auditorium cheered and applauded this teacher while I sat there deeply uncomfortable, shocked and lonely, feeling as if I was surrounded by people who were against me. A few days ago, in her message to our community, Superintendent Lori Hunter included a list of highlights of her clearly inadequate work towards addressing the prevalent antisemitism in this district, with the first item on the list being the previously mentioned assembly, the one where I felt the most unsafe I have ever felt in school as a Jewish student. I am outraged by the continuous failure of the district to handle these issues and I am disgusted by the extremely performative nature of every response we receive. Simply reiterating that hate and bias have no place in our community is not going to cut it. So I will now ask you all, how long will you go on putting up with this? Thank you.
Thank you. Very much. Um, Jess, have you got someone in, in the overflow room?
Yes, we do. Uh, name and address, please.
Uh, good evening. My name is Pippa Schuman. I live at six forty-three Old Bedford Road with my wife and son. Who's a rising eighth grader at Concord Middle School. When my family and I moved to Concord four years ago, I shared the news with a close friend, an Israeli-American who grew up in Newton. And her response surprised me. She asked, are there even any Jews in Concord? In fact, the first friends my son made at Alcott were Jewish and he's had multiple Jewish teachers and we have more Jewish friends here than we did when we lived in Cambridge. But that simple exchange stayed with me. It revealed a quiet but persistent assumption that Jewish life and by extension, Jewish safety and belonging might not exist in certain places. And yet, here we are. Concord is home to many Jewish families and to people of all backgrounds, beliefs and identities who want to feel fully seen and supported in their community. Which is why, frankly, I was so disappointed in the D E I Commission's recent statement on antisemitism. It came late and it said too little. In a time when Jewish students and families across Massachusetts and across our country are feeling increasingly vulnerable, as you can hear in my voice, silence or vague condemnation of all hateful acts sends the wrong message. We need clarity, urgency, transparency and courage. I second all of the calls towards measurement and clear reporting. I urge tabling this current proposal and ask the commission to actively collaborate with the community in Concord. I'm asking the town and the select board to make a firm and public commitment to address this scourge. One important step would be encouraging implementation of the K through twelve education recommendations of the Massachusetts Special Commission on Combating Antisemitism. These recommendations include many things that would allow our Jewish students to feel safe and supported and communication with the entire community, not just the school community, as someone else has said this evening. These are not just good policy ideas, they are frankly a moral imperative. Concord has always taken pride in its role for fighting for liberty, dignity and human rights. Let us not fail to extend that fight to protecting our Jewish neighbors, especially the children growing up in our schools today. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you have someone else in that room, Jess?
Anyone else? Yes, one person. You can speak right at the end.
I can speak here, okay. So I'm Felix Francis. I'm from two zero one one Main Street. Uh, for, I don't have a prepared remarks. I just wanted to, I keep it brief. First and foremost, I'm quite overwhelmed to see the number of people who have turned up, I think mostly to discuss on this topic. Um, one of the things which I noticed, uh, I was on vacation and I read the, the article uh, from the, from the Boston Globe was, um, the fact that, or, or maybe it was the ideal one where they said that when, after the training was given or the video was provided, where they tried to give them some kind of a training on what Holocaust was. And after that is when the kids started creating names for their soccer teams. My question is, uh, would it be possible for us to review these, uh, training material as to what is exactly going? The other reason is, um, I'm married to a Hindu wife and I want to let you know that, um, swastika is a symbol which is pretty ancient in its origin, which has been used by many different cultures. It's been used by Hinduism, Jainism, Buddhism. It was appropriated by an evil empire and they tried to use their ideologies and they tried to divide societies based on that symbol. I understand the terminology being used here, but I want to be assured that my kids or even the South Asian kids who are growing, um, they are not inadvertently, because, uh, while we are focused on this topic, I just don't want, uh, blinders to be there or blind spots of, be there where they feel neglected when they hear the term swastika and they connotate it to an evil thing. Uh, it's a, it's a historical or it's a, a ancient symbol, uh, right? So I just want to make sure that the material which is going to be created, whatever it is, uh, would there be some review that we could do so that we make sure that while we are conveying the right message to the people at large, uh, but not alienating or, you know, it's, there, there isn't a blind spot there which we are not noticing. Thank you.
Thank you for that comment. Is there anybody on Zoom directly who wants to comment? At least raise your hand. I don't see any, so I'll come back to this room. Okay, Scott Smigler.
Hi, everybody. Um, Scott Smigler, Monument Street, Concord. I'm speaking tonight as a Concord parent and community member who is deeply concerned about the rise of antisemitism, both in the schools and in the culture at large. I've heard from families who moved here, like the other speakers have mentioned, who are nervous about coming to Concord because of its old reputation for being unwel- unwel- unwelcoming to Jewish people. And now with current and former students saying that they don't feel safe being Jewish in our community, those fears are resurfacing. And to be clear, this isn't just about graffiti or slurs. It's about the daily weight that Jewish students carry. Being blamed, being othered, being told their pain is not valid. Antisemitic incidents in Massachusetts rose over forty percent last year. Our kids see it online, they hear it at school and they carry it with them. And yet even in Concord, some adults that are members of this community on social media and allegedly the school D E I director referenced in the report from the Anti-Defamation League seem to be minimizing it. Some have said that Jewish students aren't, are, are getting too much attention, arguing that naming and addressing antisemitism itself is wrong in favor of a so-called intersectional approach. But for Jewish students, that can feel like its own form of antisemitism. The kind that's subtle, that's persistent, that's manipulative. The kind that makes Jewish kids feel it's easier to hide who they are than to be seen and heard for what they're going through. And of course, every child, regardless of what group they're a member of, that faces hate or bigotry in the schools, that should also be called out directly, persistently and passionately. And so I'm asking the select board, the school committee and Dr. Hunter to not just condemn hate in general, but stand clearly and empathetically with the students who are being harmed. Those known and the many, many more who are not known. And I guarantee you for every one brave young person, like the person who just spoke out before you, there's probably a hundred others that don't have the same feeling of safety or in that case, courage to do the same. And so we know that there was at least one student who was given the option, or at least allegedly given the option, to separate themselves from their peers or to leave and they chose that option. And we can't have that happen again. And I would say, where is the anger that this is happening? Where is your love for these students, these young people whose lives are actually being forever changed by what they're experiencing right now in the schools that we all build for our students? I guarantee you, there's hundreds of students in the school right now or in the schools over the past years that will never forget what they're experiencing here. And this will change how they relate to their Jewish identity and that will impact them for a lifetime. They need to know that the adults in the room see them, support them, understand them, that antisemitism is real, it's unique and it's damaging. And they need to hear everybody speak up. And so my ask is, as others have said, table the D E I proposal, review the report from the Special Commission on Combating Antisemitism, invited its co-chair, Simon Cataldo, to come speak with you and share firsthand what he found and it may be illuminating. Thank you.
Okay, one more from the room.
I'm Ellen Hart, sixty-one West Street. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. My family moved to Concord seven years ago, specifically for the excellent school system. And in so many ways, it has lived up to and often even exceeded our expectations. The kindness and care that both my sons have received from teachers and administrators has been incredibly meaningful to our family. This is why what I am about to say is so hard. I need you to know that my heart is broken. And as more and more information surfaces, I feel betrayed by the district that I depended on to maintain a safe environment for my children and all our children. On October eleventh, nineteen eighty-five, I stood on the Beema, a tree of life synagogue in Pittsburgh, to celebrate my bat mitzvah. At twelve years old, this was and remains one of those most meaningful, important and life-altering experiences of my life. My year-long preparation for that day instilled in me a new sense of confidence and a fearlessness to do the things that scared me most. That twelve-year-old fearlessness that I had carried with me ever since was shattered when thirty-four years later, on October twenty-seventh, two thousand eighteen, eleven fellow Jews violently and senselessly lost their lives in the very same place in the very same sanctuary where I stood to celebrate one of the most important rites of passage in the Jewish faith. That day, I ceased to see the sanctuary as just that, a sanctuary. And in time, in, in the time since the attacks in Israel on October seventh, my local synagogue received multiple bomb threats and acts of vandalism. I now know that I will never truly be safe in my place of worship or anywhere else for that. I now know that I will never truly be safe in my place of worship or anywhere else for that matter. Let me say that again. As a Jew, I do not feel truly safe anywhere in the United States in the year 2025. I experienced antisemitism long before the Tree of Life shootings and long before the attacks of October 7th. In fifth grade, a classmate told me that Hitler had the right idea and that she would like to put me in a gas chamber. This is just one of countless other stories I could share, but they would sadly greatly surpass the three minutes to which I am allotted today. I tell you my story not just to share my personal experience with you, but to share our collective experience as Jews. My story is in no way unique. And as these disturbing accounts have unfolded about Jewish kids in our schools being harassed and bullied, I am reminded that we haven't come very far at all. I thought I brought my children to a place where they could thrive despite their identities and because of their identities. So I implore you to not only investigate incidents as they occur, but to educate yourselves, to educate our educators, to educate our students, to recognize, acknowledge, and be an upstander to antisemitism and other forms of hate when they rear their ugly head. I implore you to be part of a solution and not a systematic cause of the problem. I implore you to defend and protect the victims, our precious children. Concord can do better. We can do better. Thank you.
Thank you. One more from the room.
My name's Court Booth, I'm at 144 Wright Road. I first want to speak on behalf of the Concord Carlisle Human Rights Council. The council was established as a direct outgrowth of a violent and unfortunate incident of hate in our high school. We've come a long way, and we haven't come a long way. I want to echo what Nancy Brown said, there is an active bystander training next Wednesday, a week from this Wednesday, five to eight PM at the Harvey Wheeler Community Center. Info at cchumanrights.org, and you'll either get into the training or get on a waiting list for the next one. And now if I might, on my own personal behalf, why is our high school apparently a safe place for hate for some among us? I recognize that it is a community responsibility, it's yours, it's mine, it's all of ours. However, our schools are unique spaces where effective leadership can establish a culture in which bias, discrimination, bullying, and hate is unacceptable. We have provided our school leadership with ample resources, but the job is not getting done. Claims of swift and effective responses to serious allegations do not seem to be supported by the facts. I don't think they're swift, I don't think they're effective. When the School Committee established the DEI Director position, it was with the clear direction to our Superintendent of Schools that we were to search nationally for a proven strategic leader who could transform our schools into safer spaces. That search never happened. It was a clear sign that the School Committee, of which I was a member at the time, was willing to forego its responsibility and abandon its authority to guide its superintendent. That has to change. But today, we are where we are. Why are we discussing this here at the Select Board? Because it's the first forum we've had. We need the School Committee to provide these forums. I understand that student confidentiality concerns are real, are important, and the legal cautions must be attended to. But community concerns about hate in our schools deserve attention too. We only know a fraction of the issues occurring in our schools that cause harm. But those few, over time, reveal patterns that must disturb all of us. Our Metco turnover is too high, School Committee resignations have been unusually high, our dependence on outside consultants for equity work apparently doesn't yield the results intended, and excuses are routine. We need school leadership that will support our faculty and our staff and the great majority of our students who say no to hate, no to bias, no to discrimination, no to bullying, no to put downs that damage learning environments. I applaud the DEI Commission for stepping up, and I do support the idea of a trusted reporting system that is not managed only and quietly by the school leadership. It's a community responsibility. Let's tell ourselves the truth. It's time for us to change. Thank you.
Thank you. I realize that there are probably many more people who would like to speak. We do have a long agenda tonight. And
One more?
Pick one more.
We'll have to make a motion to extend the time considering the nature of the issue.
What? I'll tell you what, we'll put in this speed rule, one minute each, and I will take four more comments.
Did we use all?
Timer.
Yeah, we did. It's seven o'clock now.
All right, I may be a little over on that, but I think that points to me. Good evening, my name is Brian Farber, and I live on Ash Street. My wife, son, and I moved here ten years ago, now proud gay of two children in the park area and public schools. I'm Jewish and a first-generation American. On my father's side, he was born and hiding in Nazi-occupied France, and his parents pushed from their Austrian homeland, arriving as refugees after the war. Antisemitism is real, it is scary, I have personally lived it, and it's happening here in our community. How the town of Concord and its DEI Commission responds, how it steps up to educate and protect will be measured and amplified, for better or for worse. Let me ask plainly, how did Jewish students in our town endure years of antisemitic harassment and bullying without meaningful recognition or response? How is it that so many in our community, on the Select Board, on the DEI Commission, have not yet absorbed the twenty-four-page supplemental report from ADL outlining the damage that has been done to these students? This should not have come as a surprise. This spring, another father, Mark, who's standing back here, spoke publicly before the School Committee, raising serious concerns about rising antisemitism and the danger his children were facing. That testimony is part of the public record. Multiple antisemitic events were reported in the media, but swept under the rug. Was the DEI Commission here, on the Town Board, aware of those concerns? If not, why not? And if so, what steps were taken? I presume none. There appears to be a dangerous disconnect between the Commission and the school's DEIB office. That gap, however unintentional, has real consequences. We're seeing them now, and it cannot continue. It took several weeks for the Commission to issue a formal statement condemning antisemitism and muddle the message. For many of us, that silence in the early days was difficult and beyond disappointing. The proposed action plan includes a restorative listening circle and a healing forum, but many Jewish families aren't ready for healing until there's been an honest reckoning, understanding, and clear accountability. With deep consultation with the Jewish community, the plan risks missing the mark, and it does. We urge you, name antisemitism directly, name it uniquely. Show your support, ask us what we're experiencing and what we need moving forward. What Concord's Jewish residents need, what all residents deserve, is a DEI Commission that anticipates community harm, that speaks out distinctly and consistently against antisemitism, that partners closely with the school DEIB team, and that learns from what's happening in neighboring communities, which have been ongoing, obvious, and have been already reacted to, to respond proactively, not just reactively. Antisemitism was hiding in plain sight. We just closed our eyes to what was happening in Bedford, Acton, Marblehead, Newton, and elsewhere. The hostile environment created by those who use the Israel Hamas war in Gaza as an excuse to allow it at times to encourage antisemitism cannot be allowed to happen, and they are wrong. They are victimizing victims here in our community. I'm a willing and eager partner, I offer my experience and the commitment to help drive change, and I do so respectfully and wanting to help. And in the spirit of future collaboration, I urge the Select Board to table the DEI Commission's proposed plan so it can appropriately and loudly address antisemitism uniquely, again, and distinctly. Thank you.
I'm going to take one from the overflow room, Jess.
Great, thank you, sir. You might just get a little closer to the owl, you can look right at that, it should be.
Good evening, Grand High Tower, live on Main Street. I wonder if parents care about their children in Concord, Massachusetts? Beyond the pageantry of being resourced and the accessories that come with this region's aesthetic and providing the comforts of the quaint New England suburban life, do parents care about their children in Concord, Massachusetts? I'm here because it's abundantly clear to the black and brown families in town that care is needed, not just for our babies, but for our neighbors most especially. The question of love and care is not a hard one to engage or ask about in circles of non-white families in this region. If we're to have any ability to survive or provide mobility for our children, we must care. We must have empathy and show it for others. We must source our love because we are often in search of connection and community. We must be attentive and responsive to the onslaught of micro and overt aggression from various angles within the social, educational, and general community, sometimes so much so that we are categorized or received as aggressive in the advocacy of our children. But what I've yet to see or don't sense at all from my neighbors is urgency around the absolute conditioning of children to whom most susceptible are the white children in this town, to become bigots and participate in the acceptance of the dehumanization of those around them because of the constant inaction of adults in this town. The carelessness, cowardice, or incompetence of the adult leadership in town across sectors is acting as an incredible example of how the status quo was maintained. There will never be upstanders in a community that is afraid to stand and in fact sees no benefit in it. The ADL's filing of abuses suffered by students in the system is absolutely necessary, but just a glancing impact on the reality of the situation. For decades, students across demographics have suffered, and across generations, the response has been the same. Ignore, placate, and hope it goes away. It seems this district, this town, is willing to tolerate anything as long as it doesn't impact those with a voice who extend beyond its borders or representation in the legal arena. That includes children in need of accommodations, children who learn here but live in Boston, people who do not have the neighborhood connections. But similarly harmful, for decades, white children have learned the way to respond to their childhood neighbors, classmates, friends, for a time, is to let them suffer. To be quiet, not rock the boat, look away, or worse, begin to justify degradation of others in the non-white or non-resourced castes. And that is a deficit that must be fixed. That is what's at stake. Are we creating humans with empathy and connection, or children who are less human, less humane? So in the pursuit of healing everyone, show how this will be reckoned with and acted upon as if it matters beyond what can be swept away, but with care for who we are raising and how we want to impact each other.
Thank you. Other room? Guys, need to work it out, we're going to take two more comments.
I'll be brief. Michael Williams, 1284 Sudbury Road, Concord. I'm speaking for myself and not for the School Committee. I feel my comments may be almost miniscule compared to what's gone before. We need to pay attention, we need to work together, and I'm willing to work with the DEI Commission, the Select Board, and bring my colleagues on the School Committee to address this with the seriousness that it deserves so we can raise and educate all of our students to respect, to care for, to nurture all of our community and grow to be students that can move into a multicultural world. We're not doing that well now. We have to accept that we're not asking ourselves the questions that need to be asked, we're not telling ourselves the truth. We need to do that, we need to do that with alacrity, and I'm willing to bring my committee, ask my committee, to work with you, the Select Board, and the DEI Commission, and with Simon Cataldo, with the draft statement that he's brought forward, to work together toward a solution for our community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Connie Levine, 149 Stowe Street. I want to just say something. First of all, I don't think the School Committee can wait until August 20th to convene, so.
I will note that the School Committee has scheduled a meeting for next week, I believe it's the 22nd.
Good, glad to hear that. My issue is that I think the school has a failed process or no process, and that's what happened here. So I don't think you can combine the school with the town. You know, that's a big mistake, because first of all, you're dealing with entirely different people in the school, students versus adults versus town. So the way to handle this is to have the School Committee document their existing process. Because if you have to improve a process, you have to document how you do it now. And the best way I've ever seen anyone do it, and I have a master's degree in, you know, process management, quality management, IBM has a great thing where you document input, activity, output, and you just go all that, all the way down the line. So in this case, let's say they get a complaint, you know, an antisemitism complaint. You know, that's their input, okay? Then they have to write down, what do they do about it? Okay, you know, what are the issues? And what activity did they take, and then what is the outcome? And if you did that and read that report, the lawsuit, you would see that they're failing every single time in whatever they say they're doing. So what I would tell the school is, okay, you need to document how you do it now, and then we can work on how to improve it. And you can have the town do the same thing. Do they have a process for handling things that are discriminatory in any way? We don't know, but they should document what they have. And if it's nothing, they should say, we don't have anything, and just start working on it. And someone mentioned benchmarking, and that's a great way to do it. You know, you can also ask other towns what they have, do they have a policy? But the first thing you have to do in Concord, because it's so outrageous, that they did nothing. They don't even say if they suspended these students. You know, they should have just booted these kids out of the class, you know? And brought their parents in and had them issue apologies. Did they do any of that? We don't know. But we need to find out, because you can't start fixing something if you don't know where it stands now.
Thank you. Well, I'd like to thank you all for being here tonight. You've given us as a community a lot to think about. I think there are actions that we need to be taking now. Again, I understand the energy around the incidents in the school. The schools are a reflection of our larger community. And as a Select Board Chair, I am interested in providing leadership in that conversation, but I'm also interested in us looking very carefully at the broader question. We've had some of the speakers here tonight notice that antisemitism is not the only issue that we have. And I think all the communities will benefit from recognizing the shared experiences that have led us here, and we need to work on those together, and we will work on those together. So again, thank you for coming out. Please, offer your suggestions for actions and approaches, resources, and materials through the DEI Commission or write to the Select Board, and we will sort through, and we will come back to this topic, and we will revisit it until we're all satisfied, that we are on the right track. Appreciate it. At this point, does anyone else have any comments they want to make? Okay, we're going to move on to something that I think you'll all be very interested in. It is a permit to remove a public shade tree. I'll give you a moment, and if you do decide that you want to discuss or converse, please, outside, just because we'll need to continue our meeting.
Thank you for giving such a time.
You're welcome.
Thank you for running the meeting so nicely.
Given that. I know that was a tough act to follow. Yeah, we're going to give you a microphone. Why don't you bring the microphone and come forward? Why don't you bring the microphone and come forward? That'll be great. I think we're going to get a little smaller here.
Is it safe to assume there's some vacant seats now in the main room where there's possibly?
There absolutely are, so I would suggest if you want to remain in the meeting, come on in here. There's plenty of room and we. Okay.
Very close.
Katie Hope Wood. Live at sixty-two Bellnap Street. Yes, I am requesting a permit to, uh, remove a red pine from.
And we have your letter and the photo. Does anybody have any questions for?
I had one, and I, I don't know if our tree warden is on, but you said the result of the health of that tree from your consultant was inconclusive. But the, the town's consultant said the tree was perfectly healthy. So I just wanted to make sure I.
Oh, okay.
Your perspective.
I'm, I was just going based on the email that I got from Eric Shaw where I think he used, I think he said inconclusive. So I was just going based on that, but I didn't actually read or have access to the report.
Okay.
Not a tree expert.
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions or before?
I'm sorry. Yes, you, you want to remove the tree? You want to, it's going to, you're going to replace it with another tree?
Yeah. Yeah. So I'd like to replace it with a native tree and set the red bud. Anzi, which is one that is on the list of native trees for Concord and was suggested again by the tree warden.
So this will be a, a Concord tree planted, or are you planting it independently on your property?
I mean, I'm happy to do it through the town or to plant it independently. Either way is fine with us.
Just asking, I didn't know if we, that was agreed to by the tree warden already or not.
I just asked for suggestions. I mean, he said it could be an option, um, but I'm also happy to plant the tree independently.
I'd like to understand the objections to the tree removal a little bit. The objection, one objection seemed fairly nonspecific to the tree. It was sort of paraphrasing, haven't we had enough of this, whatever that meant. Um, I know there are maybe specific objections to the removal of the tree. Could we hear those? Is that appropriate?
Yeah, I, I do have one question as well, and then we'll hear those. This particular type of tree, is it native? The red pines?
Not sure, honestly. Yeah, if Eric is on, he should speak to that.
Okay.
And he can also speak to the disease, um, bit as well.
So do we have Eric Shaw or, or Aaron McClosko?
He's got his hand raised.
Okay, Aaron. Tell us about the tree, please.
Hey, good evening, Aaron McClosko, Highway Ground Superintendent, Town of Concord, Deputy Tree Warden for the town. The red pine, it, it is a tree that is, can be found in Massachusetts and is, is native type of tree that we find throughout, throughout the town and throughout the Commonwealth. If I could speak to a couple of the comments that were made, um, just about the tree replacement, the processes. No one can plant a tree within the public right of way without approval of the tree warden. So if that tree was going to go back, you know, a new tree was going to go back in a similar spot within the public right of way that would need to get approved by Eric Shaw, the tree warden, or myself, which would be glad to do. We do have trees available and remaining for the Concord two fiftieth tree planting that we're looking to, to place. So that could be an opportunity to, to put a tree at or near that location. And if it's not within the right of way, we could also plant it within twenty feet of the public right of way, set back onto the private property at sixty-two Bellnap as well. And, um, just one point of, I guess, clarification for this. This permit to remove the tree is an independent permit process separate from the previous public shade tree hearing, which was held, um, months prior. So if there were, you know, I know there was comments regarding during that hearing, um, just a reminder to, to the folks, I guess, just procedurally, this is not an appeal process. This is a second, um, separate route in parallel, uh, option to remove a tree in the public right of way. Option one is a public shade tree hearing, and option two is a permit from the local select board.
Okay.
And then, Aaron, just to be clear, uh, the health of the tree is good?
So we had an independent, uh, report, um, completed by Davy Resource Group, and I don't know, did the Select Board receive?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, so in that, it did, the list of concerns relative to this tree were some, some, some of the needling, uh, needles on the tree were starting to, uh, um, had a reddish tint, reddish color. And some of there, there was some dead wood, um, you know, one inch or above. But as stated in the report, the likelihood of failure of those, of those branches was five years. Um, so overall health was not a concern. Um, we did not identify it as a tree that rose to the level of, you know, immediate action being taken to remove it at the time.
Sorry, we're getting, it, it's a process to grant a permit, which means who's paying for the removal and the replanting?
So as, as of right now, uh, the current process and policy is, this is a town asset. Public shade trees are, you know, we consider them an asset for the town. The town would pay for the removal. I would note that we have been working this year and, and in the near future, we'll, we'll be creating a, a draft policy for recommendation to the Public Works Commission that will, will modify that, um, that cost allocation, will propose that. But at the current time, the town would, the town would remove the tree through the Department of Public Works.
What about replacing it?
Uh, replacement would be funded through the Public, Public Works as well. There are a couple of funding options right now. Um, unfortunately, public shade tree planting was not funded in the FY twenty-five, or excuse me, FY twenty-six budget, uh, but we do have funding available and trees available through that Concord two fiftieth tree planting project. It's still ongoing.
We're more than happy to pay for the removal and replacement ourselves.
Can I ask why you want, why you're coming forward with this request?
Yeah, uh, the tree, um, you know, I know, I think the pictures are available. It's, um, frankly, it does not look like it's in good health. It's not aesthetically pleasing tree. It actually doesn't provide any shade because its foliage is so sparse. Um, it's also really close to telephone wires. And my understanding, which again, Aaron can speak to, is that a number of these trees, um, up on Noshadik have, are suffering from a disease and so have had to be removed. And so taking all of those things together, speaking with neighbors, it just felt, it feels like we'd be better off to take out this tree and put in another native tree, which we know will, you know, do well in that spot, be aesthetically pleasing, provide shade, et cetera.
We have a picture of the tree on.
Yeah. I don't know if, if any of you are out to see the tree. So I was out to see the tree. It's a tree. It does not, you know, with all due respect to the arborists, this tree does not look like it's in good shape. Um, it's very, very sparse. In addition, this tree, um, I, I have sympathy to, to the homeowner. This tree is inside your fence. It's actually on, in your yard. It's not sitting on the side of the road. So it's a very tall tree right over some lines. And it's, it's leaning. I'm not saying it's a threat, but I've had pine trees in my, you know, it kind of snap off. So, I mean, it, to me, it looks like it's a threat to the lines. Given the fact that it'll be a replacement tree, perhaps I, yeah. I have a lot of sympathy for the homeowner here. It's because it's on their property. And that, it is a public shade tree, probably with, the measurement was made, but since I have your fence, it's in your yard, so.
So I guess I'd like to say two things. One is I, I don't think it's a bad tree. I think it looks okay. There are many trees that are on people's private property that are just like this tree. The concern I have is, um, just our policy and our approach, right? So we approved the removal of the tree last week, but I think that was more of a safety concern. Um, I'm concerned that this is the town's expense when we take this tree down, other than also just like a preserved tree. So I, I'm not necessarily in support of, of, of removing this tree at this time. You know, I think it was absolutely very nice that you offered to pay for the removal of the tree. I, I guess that's the question.
I don't know if Aaron knows that.
Yeah, Aaron, could you, you, so it got by me that this was a permit, not an appeal. So I'm going to ask the question again. Um, Aaron, is it an option to have the homeowner reimburse the town and commit to replacing the tree?
Uh, I'm not exactly sure how to answer that question. This has been the first time in my career with the Town of Concord, we've been in the situation where we've had a, a tree removal come to the Select Board for a permit, um, and the applicant requests to pay for it themselves. So I don't know if that could be a condition of the permit. That'd probably be a, a question best set for illegal counsel.
Yeah, because, because I am sort of with, I mean, with, I, I think you've brought forth something that's very, you know, reasonable. But as a policy, saying, hey, here's a tree, we, we don't really have somebody saying it's a dead tree and it's a health hazard to just say, hey, well, the town will pay for removing a tree because somebody kind of, you know, doesn't like the tree. And it's, you know, I grant that, I, I get it, but it's sort of like, that's a tough policy to kind of say, because, because then it sets a precedent, right? So if it's something where I'm, you can pay for it, I'm, I'm sort of, I'm good. But I don't think, I want to set the precedent of paying for non-sick tree.
Yeah, I, I agree with that. I, I also recognize, and I think you, you heard, there's, there's actually no budget for this kind of thing. So typically, we address tree removals as a matter of urgency when the tree is, is an imminent problem. So, um, how about we do this? How about we do a little more homework, a little bit more homework and discover whether or not the, the, the offer to reimburse is, is something that we could accept. Because sometimes we, we discover that we can't, even though that seems, I mean, reasonable in this case. And then we revisit it based on having that information researched. Okay, all right. So let's, let's take it out of that way and we'll get back to. Um, I will take a couple of comments on this since we're going to have a, or the hearing on a permit. Thank you, Tanya.
Show a picture, I just, which looks a little better. And, and, um.
When you're talking to the microphone.
Thank you, Tanya Geller, sixty-two Prescott Road. I just, thank you for all your comments. Uh, I think you understood just from my letter and, and everything. I just want to, I just wanted to point out that it's, it actually, the tree actually looks better after the rainy spring. Sorry, yeah, that tree looks better now than it did in the spring. And I also, in addition to the fact that I don't find it, uh, bad looking, there, I noticed that there are other trees in the neighborhood, uh, turning around the corner in Bellnap that are of a similar kind, similar type of tree. So in aesthetically, even having that tree there provides a kind of continuity in, in, with the neighborhood too. But I think, I will repeat everything else. Thank you.
All right, thanks. Stan and I, since you would like to make a comment.
Yes, uh, Stan, we were, uh, speaking on my own behalf, um, although I'm in the Public Works Commission, so making that clear. Uh, I live at fifty Bellnap, and although the number, the numbering scheme at Bellnap is a little bit funny. So fifty Bellnap is direct neighbor to sixty-two Bellnap. And, uh, I wrote your email in support of removal, and I want to clarify a few things. As Tanya pointed out, you can't see the things in singularity. Just not one tree alone. We just, um, planted last year together with Public Works directly on, on the property line. Just, I would say, ten yards away from that tree, Armstrong Maple. Two years before that, we planted on our own behalf another sugar maple directly on, on the property line, just another kind of five yards away. Then on that corner Tanya mentioned, in the last four years, there were, I think, two pine trees taken down because of safety concerns. One directly on my property, one on the, on the public road, uh, shade side. So there is a history of these pine trees, um, that, and when they took it down, they realized it wasn't really in bad shape, although it was questionable at that time. So I see there is not just a singular tree. I see there's some movement around that. And there is already placement happening, um, this well ahead of time because prior owners, the Hopewoods moved in early last year. The prior owners were already also concerned about that tree. So there is some, some larger picture. And the final comment on how this could go, given the financing, um, you had earlier on your consent agenda acceptance of gifts. So you could, you could think about a conditional permit that is conditioned to a gift that is in a similar amount or the same amount as the cost.
Thanks for that suggestion.
Thanks.
Okay, so we're going to, I think, table us to get a little bit more information on our options, and then we'll come back to it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, I believe that brings us to the, uh, annual town meeting calendar. Good evening, Congress. You have to be right up close to that.
Right up close, okay.
So, uh, I, I think that, um, you have the draft, um, calendar. And it came along with, and I, I've got to thank, um, Shannon, who really took the laboring orange uh, on this, and it's had a lot of input.
Is it still not working? Okay.
You have to be able to hear yourself.
Okay, all right.
So. I feel like I'm going to knock a tooth out. Okay. So, the, um, the calendar has been put together. It's had lots of input. You know, in the perfect world, I think we would have chosen the first Monday in May for the, um, for, for town meeting. That was absolutely not going to work for the high school because of the scheduling of the, um, the annual musical. So it would have been a very difficult time for them. So the only thing I will observe is that we haven't yet had an opportunity to assess the middle school as an appropriate venue for town meeting. And that's a, that's a, a broad spectrum review because we need to look at it from space, from flow, from check-in, from, uh, you, you know, the, um, placement of electrical outlets and ethernet for the, the clerks to do check-in, parking, and probably most importantly, the, the IT situation there. So we just don't know, and there wasn't any way to do that quickly. That's going to take some time. So it seems that we should just, accept that we're going to be doing the last Monday in April. And, uh, you don't have to choose the location for town meeting until we publish the warrant. So we have plenty of time to review the middle school and think about it without changing the date. And I would note that, um, some of these things don't have to be addressed until later, but, uh, you have a memo on the survey results from town meeting. And one of the things that's clear is that people really appreciated starting at six thirty and ending at nine thirty. So I, I think we certainly are going to want to keep that, but, but again, this calendar doesn't require you to set the actual time. You could change it with the publication of the warrant. But right now, six thirty would be, is, is indicated. So, um, I think everybody's had an opportunity to review the draft calendar. And if you have any questions or thoughts about it, and Shannon, is there anything you want to add?
And I think we, I saw Lois, there she is behind Michael, and it works for the finance committee, as I understand it? Yes, okay.
You mentioned the middle school is a possible alternative to the high school.
Yes.
Could the middle school, this probably different topic, be a another hybrid, another node? Center in addition to that?
Potentially, we'd have to look at what the cost and the logistics would be, but potentially for sure.
All right.
Um, you mentioned that we don't have to decide the time for town meeting. Do we have to decide the time for the hearings at tonight? Because they're scheduled for seven o'clock. And we just heard that people like an earlier time. And we also know that the hearings don't get the turnout that we like. So are are we stuck with this time?
So, um, the 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 finance committee is responsible for three of those hearings and the planning uh, board is responsible for another one. And I think that their preference is to start at six thirty so they can deal with other business and then have the meeting at seven. Am I speaking correctly?
Hearing at seven, starting at six thirty. Yes, Lois.
In response to Shannon's drafts, um, my, she had the finance committee meeting starting earlier because that's when our, um, finance committee hearing starting earlier because that's when our meetings do. And I suggested we keep all the hearings starting at the same time, cuz I think it's just confusing for the public. Some meetings are at seven and some are at six thirty. If we don't, if if the decision is made to start at six thirty,
Yeah, they're they're not starting off.
They're not all, I know, but, yeah.
Okay. Yeah, I think typically what the select board has done is we've had a regular meeting and then adjourned to the hearing and then do the hearing and then some.
That's what we had thought we would do with the finance committee, have a regular meeting at six thirty. Start the meeting, the hearing at seven and then go back into our regular meeting afterward. But we can be flexible about that.
Yeah, I get the question is, do we have to, if we approve this tonight, are we locked into these times? Should we still have flexibility?
So the only thing I would say is that we got ourselves into a boatload of trouble last year because we changed the calendar a couple of times and not everyone kept up with the changes. And then people scheduled conflicts that required us to change some hearing dates at the very last minute and some of the notices had already gone out for the for the date that we were not gonna have the hearing. So I think the less we mess with this, once you adopt it, the better. Yeah, I I. I think that if this schedule goes out and it says the hearing starts at six, you're gonna have some people show up at six.
Maybe we should just change it to seven.
Yeah, I I think that's been our practice is to, is to try to dispense with whatever business we could. And I don't think we've actually worked out the next spring select board meeting schedule, but we would, I would assume we would have a regular meeting on that day. Rather than, cuz that tends to be because we usually attend the hearings as well. That's that's a lot of meetings in in a very short period of time between the the second and the twelfth.
Setting the calendar, I think that's fine to put seven o'clock. I think just going forward, though, we might wanna think about how to get better participation at the hearings and having them earlier might be an option. But for tonight, let's, we don't have to solve that tonight.
Great.
So I have one comment, but I think the timing is fine and every concern people had last time is addressed here. One of the things that always comes up is the, uh, Friday, January ninth, that interim deadline for the town. Can we just word this a little differently? Cuz some people get confused over this. I know that's really the town and the schools have a draft, but if we could reword this somehow to make it clearer, like, maybe it's the due date or, uh, it just, so it's cuz the the parentheses for internal town and staff, people don't tend to read it. If there's a way to clarify that, maybe it's just raft date for school and town departments. Something like that.
Yeah, because that.
Sure, you you could easily change it to, um, due date for, um, school and town departments to submit draft warrant articles.
Yeah.
And then I think it's still good to keep that additional sentence that citizen petition articles are not subject to this.
Right. Because that's, that's really not a a legal deadline. That's a procedural deadline that we're
Exactly.
trying to put into place for.
Yeah, we're just, just protect town staff from, uh, one day.
Right, right.
Yeah.
And then just a note to ourselves, I think, and Cameron, maybe this is for you. The school committee didn't come to the, um, the ordering of the warrant article last year. And we really need you guys to be there at that, so make a note to do that, general issue or your trade savings. Yeah, yeah.
Good. I think those are good things. Any other?
No, I think all the good.
Okay, so we're, we're going to change the wording on on the staff due date and change the time on the March second select board hearing to match the others and be seven o'clock. Um, with that.
Ready for motion? Yeah, I move to approve the, uh, twenty twenty-six annual town meeting calendars included in the select board meeting packet with the, uh, modifications discussed tonight.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Carmen. Appreciate it. So I think, um, Carmen. We're, we're about to talk about the, uh, approved town meeting petitions to the general court. I was, I was hoping you might guide us a little bit. So if you're, if you're have a moment. So the, this is a, as a result of our last town meeting, the one we just completed in June, all those one month ago. Um, Articles twenty-seven, twenty-eight and thirty-six were, were, um, calling on the town to uh, submit home rule petitions, uh, on annual town meeting and special town meeting, remote participation, uh, rank choice voting and the ban on second generation anticoagulant rodenticides. So, um, this is an administrative procedure and we don't have to craft language or do anything particularly, that's.
In this particular instance, uh, each of these articles had the draft legislation as part of the article. So, uh, that that means that you don't have any drafting to do. You, you can submit uh, each of these petitions the way they were, uh, approved by town meeting. Now, that doesn't mean that the offices of our legislators aren't gonna propose tweaks. Uh, and it doesn't mean that once these things get to committee in the legislature, there might not be small changes suggested. But, um, the language of the warrant articles and the motions, uh, under them at, um, at town meeting allowed for, as long as, as long as these were substantially in the same in the same form, it's fine. So that, uh, uh, that was, that qualification was there in recognition of the fact that things happen along the legislative, uh, process.
Okay. Does anyone have any further questions about this process?
Yeah, I have one question. The, um, Article twenty-seven on remote participation, how how does our home rule participation jive with the, uh, the bill before the legislature, twenty-two seventy-four, which is statewide to permit um, remote participation? Is it is it redundant? Is it supportive of it? Is it independent of it? Is there, there's a bill before the legislature right now.
Right, so there there is a bill before the legislature that's an omnibus bill that would basically create an option for any, um, town with an open town meeting, uh, to, um, uh, adopt remote participation. So if that were to pass, there'd be no need for our special legislation cuz we already have the authority. There'd be some other process and we would adopt through that statute. But this is a parallel trap, basically. So if there's no action on that omnibus article, there still could be action on ours and and that's, so they're just working in parallel.
So it's independent in parallel, okay.
It is independent in parallel, yeah.
Ready for a motion?
Yes, I am.
I think I'm gonna read three of them altogether. Okay, move to petition the general court to enable home rule legislation to implement remote participation at annual and special town meetings as included in the select board meeting packet, which Article twenty-seven was passed by a majority of voters at annual town meeting on June third, twenty twenty-five. And then I'm gonna move to petition the grant, the general court to enact home rule legislation to implement a ranked choice voting system as included in the select board meeting packet, which also, which Article twenty-eight was passed by more than two-thirds of voters at annual town meeting on June third, twenty twenty-five. And move to petition the general court to, uh, enact home rule legislation to implement a ban on second generation anticoagulant rodenticides, escars, as included in the select bar meeting packet, which Article thirty-six was passed by more than two-thirds of the vote voters at annual town meeting on June fourth, twenty twenty-five.
Right here, a second. Yep. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Anyone else? Thank you, Connor. Okay. Next up. Thirty-five minutes behind. We're, we're going to, we had, uh, agreed as also part of the town meeting that we would, um, have a discussion soon. So this is qualifying as soon on the New England Deaconess Association monetary contributions for the affordable housing for seniors being designated um, to either the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust or other purposes. So um, this is a, an opportunity to discuss where we are with respect to that memorandum of agreement that was signed, um, just before we pass the special zoning to allow the, um, contribution. So recognizing that this is a prospective discussion in the sense that, uh, construction hasn't begun, the the amounts are not, um, not settled. Um, and so it may be some time before these, these monies become available to the town. The question is, um, we do have a letter from, uh, Concord Municipal Affording Housing Housing Trust strongly urging us to to make a commitment here, but it is, um, it is up to us to decide whether or not this is an appropriate time or whether this should be a decision for our future select board. Thoughts?
Yeah, I mean, I'll, I'll start. So, um, you know, I think we, we got to a good place, right, with with Deaconess, uh, in my opinion. I think in a lot of other people's opinions. Um, and, you know, it's great that they're setting aside money, right? It's very clear in the agreement, right, that the money that's set aside is to be used only for seniors, right? And specifically, if I recall, for either housing, healthcare or some other forms of financial assistance. Um, and while I think, you know, a lot of the stuff that the the housing trust and people in the housing have 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 talked about and advocated for isn't, you know, it's important stuff. For me, I don't see any reason why we would restrict ourselves, right, um, to to how the money would be used in the future, right? So this is money that's several years away from from happening. Uh, and I don't, we've already, there are already restrictions on it, so I don't see a need to to try to sort of further restrict that. Uh, when we get to the time when the money's available, I think we can make decisions as to the, as to the best use. And the best example that I can come up with is what if there's another pandemic? In five years from now, we've senior people in our town who are are sick and we need to help them. And we say, hell, wait a second, we don't have the money cuz we we restricted ourselves to not having money available for use, right? So, um, you know, to me, I think it's premature to talk about, uh, I don't, and I don't, from a policy perspective, know why we would wanna go restrict ourselves.
Mary?
I wanna make a few comments. When we first, um, got into negotiations with Deaconess.
Mary, can we make sure that everyone can hear you?
Oh, no.
Sorry. At least you don't have to eat.
The talking stick. Um, when we first got into negotiations with Deaconess, um, it was very clear that our intention was to use this money for senior housing. And the only reason it expanded was because, um, Deaconess, according to their IRS regulations, it needed to cover more than housing. But our intent was always for housing. That's how we, um, described it to Deaconess in during our negotiations. And I think that's what we highlighted to the voters at, um, town meeting. But more importantly to me is that we have to remember that this will be a a one-time, um, cash inflow to the town. And when we have one-time cash inflows, we should restrict spending to one-time outflows. So for example, if we start taking one-time inflows to fund an operating expense, we set an expectation in the community that this is a service that we're gonna make available. And then when the funding stops, that now becomes an expectation on the general fund. So it's always, I think, a good policy to keep one-time inflows to fund one-time outflows. And, um, as far as the timing goes, I don't know when exactly Deaconess is gonna break ground, but I would hope that the people who are active in actually negotiating this had something to say with um, how the money was allocated.
Well, just a reminder, it's not just a one-time. When we do get it, it's gonna spread out over ten years.
Yeah.
Right, and but I completely agree. We negotiated in good faith for housing, right?
And it ends at the end of ten years. I mean.
Right, unless there's another phase that expands or they break down, right? Um, it, but just to comment on the timing, I I think, um, it should be used for housing. Uh, do we have to make a vote now to spend this money? I, I don't think we have to. I I'm fine not doing it. Uh, you know, I'm fine talking about this, but I am certainly intending to use this for housing. Cuz that was the spirit of our negotiation with them.
It was.
There's even lots of ways to use money for housing.
Right, but in the traditional sense of what, how we've worked with the, um, the housing trust is usually buy down opportunities or we're contributing to the purchase of a, of a building, helping the development cost. So generally, that's what I think of when we talk about supporting housing.
It makes a unit available to, to, right.
Someone which contributes to the inventory.
Yeah, it's, it's.
Paul?
Yeah, I mean, within the, uh, purview of the housing trust, the senior housing is one type of affordable housing. So somehow it would have to be kind of linked to that.
That's right.
I, I, true. I kind of, um, feel that it is maybe premature. We may end up doing this. The wording gives us, I, I wasn't there during negotiations. I wasn't a member of the select board. But the wording gives us some opportunities to think about other priorities. We have priority of tax release, really even senior assistance, for example. Uh, two, three, four, five years from now, that may loom as a higher priority than housing. So if we don't have to make that decision, commit right now and committed to future select boards to that, I'd be favorable to hold it off. I I think it's entirely worthy for affordable housing for seniors, but I'm just don't think that's the only priority. Then they grab our attention a few years from now. So I, I'd be thinking just waiting.
I, I agree that we don't have to make this decision at the moment. I I also think that even if we did, a future select board could.
Yeah, I mean, I, yeah. The whole like.
Different. I I think it is.
But they'd be impressive.
Yeah, it is. It is important that we recognize that that what got us here was, was a desire to, to, um, provide additional housing. We, you know, five years from now, we might be well away from the, the ten percent tripwire for forty Bs and things like that. And and maybe the urgency might feel different. And so it's, there's something to be said for sending that, sending a message around around that as a reminder. But I also quite well understand Cameron's point that we don't really know exactly what's going to be in front of this board when it is more clear exactly what the, what the funding stream is gonna be and when that stream is going to begin to flow. Um, so you know, while we could try to restrict that board, uh, if I were sitting on that board, I would still be entertaining the alternatives at that time.
Whi- which board?
The future, the future.
When the money actually comes in, has to get sort of validated.
Well. Okay, I just wanna, I I was talking about when we first started negotiating. And the reason that we went down this path was we realized that Deaconess was building senior housing that wasn't affordable.
Right.
Right? And so the whole reason why we entered into this negotiation was so that we got affordable units. Um, and, and I think we might be losing sight of that, which is the whole reason why we, we that was.
The whole, that was the intent all along.
That was the intent all along. And the only reason we have this other thing, this other opportunity is because of a technicality with their IRS regulations that, that. But our intent was always to make sure that when we're building housing, when developers come into Concord to build housing, that we have some affordable units, and this is not an affordable development.
Yeah, and, you know, to build on that just a little bit, for, for people that weren't involved in how this was negotiated, there was a, there was another proposal that wouldn't have led to a stream of funding that involved trying to somehow understand and calculate what programs might be taking place within the, the new development to provide opportunities to make it affordable for certain individuals there. And, and that seemed complex.
It was attainable, it wasn't necessarily affordable.
It wouldn't have counted in, in any way, shape, or form towards our, towards our inventory. And it was ultimately going to be a little opaque in terms of really having any visibility to what the impact of, of, of the agreement was actually going to be. So this, this stream of, of revenue is, is quite a bit better from my perspective in the sense that it creates something that, that we can control and apply to, to the housing problem, issue and problem. And I, I completely agree that housing has to be, if not, you know, it has to be the highest priority for this. I'm just allowing for the possibility that there might be other ways of using it that are also important and effective that, that might involve a minority amount. And I, again, a little reluctant to, you know, try to use my crystal ball on that.
Yeah, I'm not losing, I don't think it's a losing side of the main.
Yeah.
And, you know, it could be down the road. We, we portion some part of this, the different priorities. It's just to maintain flexibility and, and not restrict ourselves. That's what I'm.
Do we have a timing for when we, if we decide that, you know, it's too soon to decide? Do we have any idea of when we would decide?
I mean, it might be likely to be several years before the money.
Probably got to be a couple of years. They have to be fully occupied, or eighty percent occupied, I think, before that, those funds are, yeah.
Yeah, so my.
Other question, one of the questions that, that's come to my mind too is, I, I recognize that, that it would be nice to feel like this was on the way from, from the Housing Trust perspective. But does it do any particular harm to say that we simply haven't made that commitment? Is, I, I'm seeing Keith's hand.
We don't even know when, we, we don't know when the money would even come in.
Yeah.
We could have a sense of the board. We don't, it's not binding, but we could have a sense of the board.
Yeah, I think the sense of the board is to prioritize housing, but allow for the possibility that there may be some other, if there are other opportunities that avail themselves that seem to fit into the, the mission, then that would be a possibility, which is flexibility and optionality. I'm going to take a comment from Keith Bergman, who's been patiently waiting, and I see Frank Feely as well.
Thanks very much, Keith Bergman, fifty-six White Avenue Chair of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust. And first, thank you to the select board for negotiating the agreement with Deaconess that, that ensured the passage of the, of the zoning article at town meeting to let them go forward with their business model to be successful and makes available the funds in, in this, in this agreement. The trust took its vote, I think in part because it, while it's fresh in our minds, and while everyone remembers how we got here, we thought it important to sort of memorialize that in a rec, in a recommendation now to you to specifically establish a special gift fund, and that's, that's under a particular statute in Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three A, that, that you, by establishing a special gift account, you would identify what the purpose of those funds are when the fund, in anticipation of the funds arriving at some future time. And, and in a way, it's sort of a, a way for this select board to send a memo to the files for future select boards. And I agree completely that a future select board could do something as simply as amending the prior vote and, and establishing the funds for some other purpose. I think what this affords this board the opportunity to do is for you to state what, at this point in time, what your priorities are for the use of the funds, if you, if you would choose to do that. Mindful that, that there would be this funding source of, for persons, to benefit persons age fifty-five and older, and mindful that the Deaconess, as has already been said, the Deaconess expansion won't be affordable. That the trust in revisiting its policy goals and, and strategies and implementation steps is specifically identifying, along with other things that we do, is specifically looking at having a goal to, to create housing for affordable housing for persons age fifty-five and older. We didn't have a specific one that called that out, but, but we do now, just as our way of sending a memo to the file. And if opportunities arise for us to address that goal without waiting, without having to wait for these funds, you'll be the first to know.
Okay.
Thanks.
Frank Feely.
Rich Feely, three forty-seven Lexington Road. I would be very disappointed if the select board did not vote to commit this money. Let's face it, we're all mortal, and although everybody may be kindly disposed of housing now, some of you won't be on the select board, some of us won't be here. It's been over ten years since we started down the road of trying to do affordable elderly housing in town, affordable assisted living. That didn't happen for complex reasons. And the one thing we can be sure of is Newbury Court's not going to sit on that land. They're not going to let that twelve million dollars be idle. They'll move as fast as they reasonably can. But if we don't have a commitment of this money for housing, we can't start talking to developers about, you know, we've got this pot here, there's the, here's the building going up across from Newbury Court, and when that's done, we've got three million dollars, can we do a deal here? If we don't commit this money, it, you know, it's just sitting there. And just remind you, finally, you know, the population over eighty and ninety in Concord is increasing sixty percent in twenty-five years, and they can't all live in Newbury Court. So please, commit the money now. Thank you.
Antonin?
I think Carolyn wants to speak.
Carolyn, who are you? Okay, I thought you might have been just stretching your lips. Sorry about that.
Tony Gales, sixty-two Prescott Road, and number of comments. First of all, Newbury Court is not only about housing. Newbury Court also takes care of its residents, various needs, health, maintenance, all sorts of whatever. So the response to that is that there are seniors in town who have housing, but they, they still have needs. And, you know, we are likely to become one of those in a few years. But there are others, you know, people who don't want to move to some, and afford Newbury Court, don't want to move, but they still have needs. So I think the Council on Aging at least needs to be consulted, consulted on this. And the other thing is that I'm sorry, but that's not what was said at town meeting. I, I, in fact, I happened to ask a question, and the answer I received was that it would be for various senior purposes. It, nobody said that the spirit of it was that it would all go to affordable housing. That's a, certainly a very worthwhile goal. I'm not disputing the goal, and I'm not even disputing the reasoning of the people in terms of committing the money so developers can, you know, know it's there, et cetera. But there are other needs. My sense was that seniors need care, just like seniors in Newbury Court get care. And housing is only one of them. And, and my understanding was that this would be for all kinds of senior needs. So I just want to correct the record of what was conveyed, at least to me, at town meeting.
Thank you, Carolyn.
Carolyn Reed, Member of the Finance Committee, but speaking on my own behalf. I've been trying to find this, this elusive memorandum of agreement, and I, memorandum of understanding. I'd like to get a copy of it. I've requested, have not.
Select board, it was in the select board meeting packet for June second.
Which date? June second, two thousand and twenty-five? So it's attached to that? And that's, that, that's the final version?
I, there might have been a word change.
I'm looking for, I'm looking for the final version.
It's there.
The final version is in the June second, two thousand and, thank you for that clarification. I didn't realize it was published. I would support the, the notion that I've heard today to delay a decision, not just on how to use the funds, but how to deposit the funds, because once you put money into a gift account, that's the only thing you can use it for. And it, and it eliminates the flexibility that you may need when you find that you do have some other needs. So please wait. Thank you.
All right, and Candace Carr, Matt, I'll see you in a minute.
I'm Stephen Carr, Candace's spokesperson. On, on Mustafield Road, and I'm, I'm on the Concord Housing Foundation. My mother lived at Newbury Court for twenty years. I am a strong supporter of Newbury Court. I'm on the waiting list for Newbury Court, and I may end up there. And I have a lot of respect for Chris Centros and what Newbury Court has done. Nevertheless, I would like this money to be committed to housing. We have a significant problem in Concord with affordable housing. I think that's recognized by not just the majority, the great majority. If we leave this open to be used for reduction in real estate taxes or something like that, there are all sorts of issues that come up. I mean, there are people who don't pay much in real estate taxes for lots of reasons, and they don't necessarily mean that they're poor. So I think the, I would hope that the select board would say, yes, we need a commitment that this money is going to be used specifically for affordable housing, as was in the draft of the agreement. I, I assume that both parties had agreed that that was what was to be, this money was to be used for. And only when the technical tax point came along did it somehow get shifted. I think the agreement to do it and limit it to affordable housing was right in the first place, and I hope the select board would agree.
Thank you. Matt?
Matt Johnson, off mic currently.
Right up there.
You have to eat.
Okay.
Matt Johnson, twenty-one Winthrop Street in Concord, Member of the Concord Municipal Affordable Housing Trust, as well as the Concord Housing Foundation. And I just wanted to mention that supporting affordable housing in Concord is really hard, okay? It's incredibly hard, and we've worked very hard since last November to help Newbury Court get over the line at town meeting by negotiating a affordable housing element to their proposal. And now to have you guys stand here and say, oh, we don't want to commit ourselves, you know, we'd like to keep our options open. I mean, as somebody who's trying to get affordable housing in Concord, it's not like this is going to go away. We just had the federal budget agreement that's going to further stratify incomes. There is going to be worse affordable housing needs in five years, I guarantee you, than there are now. So in Concord specifically. So we need a win in the affordable housing community. We can't just sit here and have our little bits of hope taken away from us, the few that we get. So I just want to urge that you make a commitment, because the institutions do not have good memories. If you set this down in paper, at least there will be a fund that's designated, that people will understand why this was set aside from the beginning. So I really think, yes, you have all these options, great, you could do this, and, you know, management principles. But really, think about the advocates here, the work they did, and the commitments that we need to make as a town to try to right the ship that's sinking for affordable housing.
Thanks. Okay, I take one more comment. Moira?
You're Matt. Moira Walsh, sixty-ninth Row Street.
Right up close to it, Mark.
Have seated, huh?
Yes, knock your teeth out.
Moira Walsh, sixty-ninth Row Street, Concord Housing Foundation. I also was on the five-year production plan. So I know your statistics very well. Six thousand seniors by twenty thirty, twenty percent live at poverty level. We need to get real. You know, you may all be here in five years, and I hope, for your sakes, that you are. But I've seen institutional history die here before. We all did, with Junction Village. We cannot let this die at this table tonight. I know you all, I think that you can see the future, but I question how many of you have read those reports, have digested the data, and really know the future like those of us who work very hard on this, just like you do, all volunteer. You aren't, as you all said, you can come back with a whole new group of people, and they can amend it in five years. But please, show the courage to vote tonight for the seniors that, and it is a really sad situation. I could tell you story after story of senior who's lived here for twenty-five years that has had to leave Concord. You know, if we can't take care of ourselves and our neighbors, we, we really don't need to worry about the world. So that's all I have to say. And as you can tell, we are big advocates for this.
Okay.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I, I would like to point out that we haven't built any senior housing. We need senior housing, and we haven't built any. So I, I would like to make a motion
Okay.
that we establish a gift fund to accept the mitigating payment from Deaconess with a priority for housing for seniors age fifty-five.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm just, to me, like, us voting here, just to be clear, doesn't add or take away one dollar, right? So nobody is saying, like, hey, wait a second, we're not supportive of seniors, we're not supportive of housing.
Oh, shit.
So it's contractual, so it's contractual per the agreement that we have. So again, I will restate it, not adding one dollar by doing what we were doing. To me, it's not prudent policy to restrict ourselves to the best use of money in the future. I agree with the previous comment that said, you can't predict the future. That's exactly what I'm saying. I can't sit here and predict the future, and because of that, I want to make sure that we have the availability to put the highest and best use of those funds when they become available.
Cameron, I believe this has some flexibility because it, the wording was a priority, but it's not restricted.
I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Designated for affordable housing for persons age fifty-five and older.
The other thing is that.
That was the request.
Should, should we do that, the, the transfers of the funds once received would have to take place at the time anyway?
We'll have to vote, though.
I'm establishing a fund.
You're establishing the fund, but actually putting money into the fund?
Right.
Is another action.
It's another action.
That's right, you're right.
Would have to.
You're right, you're right. So this is a.
So I, I.
Attention.
It's a memo to the future that says there's, there's an empty bank account there. It's a memo to the future that says, there's, there's an empty bank account there.
Yes, exactly.
That's intended to, to receive this money. You know, it's kind of like the savings plan for whatever that future need is.
Christmas club.
You can actually put the money in or not, but if you don't, it won't be there.
Yeah, there's a lot of other steps that would happen.
And while we can't predict the future, we do know that, that Junction Village land is dated for senior housing. So we have a need.
No, it's not, it's not. It's dated for affordable.
Affordable.
Not senior.
Yeah.
So we, we need to be clear.
Point is.
We don't have any commitments to senior housing right now in our housing plans.
That doesn't mean.
So we have a vote in.
Can you read the motion again?
Establish a gift fund to accept the mitigating payment from Deaconess with a priority for housing for seniors age 55 plus.
So that would be, we're establishing a fund.
We're establishing a fund.
Funding the fund, yeah.
We're not funding it, we're establishing, so it's a, it's a sense of our intention. Establish a gift fund to accept the mitigating payment from Deaconess with a priority for housing for seniors age 55 plus. And we would still, so there are more checks later, but this is a sense of where we are.
Do we have a motion in a second? Any further discussion? Yeah, are you set? Okay.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed?
Neat.
Okay. Order ones, motion passes. Thank you. All right. We're going to hear from Brian Ferraro now. So, Brian, Brian, introduce yourself.
Sure, Brian, Brian Ferraro, trying to speak while I play here. Ryan Ferraro, Acting Chief Financial Officer of the Town of Concord. If I may mishear, the item before you tonight is a request under Mass General Law.
You have to get really close.
Get really close, huh? Okay, okay.
Your best rock star in the face.
Okay. I'll, I'll try to get close then, so, thank you. So the request before you tonight, per Mass General Law, Chapter 44, Section 33B, basically allows us to make end of the year transfers among our various divisions. So we brought this item up in front of the Finance Committee. This has to be approved of by both the Finance Committee and the Select Board. So it is just part of the exercise that we go through at the end of the fiscal year. So we had brought this up to the Finance Committee at their June 26 meeting. They have already voted in the affirmative, and we are making a similar request to you this evening. So that's what's required under Mass General Law, and that's the request before you tonight. I would note that even this is a pretty dynamic process in terms of closing out the fiscal year. When we put this memo together, we didn't necessarily think that we would need any transfers among our various divisions. But in looking at this recently, we think we, we just may. So this has even changed from when I sent out this, this memorandum to you. So again, this is essentially more of a formality in terms of the processes that we have to follow here as we close out the fiscal year. I would note, for the very, you know, very good suggestion of the Finance Committee, we also added that we're, we would be providing both the Finance Committee and the Select Board with an update on what those transfers were by the end of September. So you'd get an update with that, too. I think that was the recommendation that was suggested by Carlin. So respectfully, request your support tonight, and we have a proposed motion for you.
So can, can I ask two questions? One was, when you presented this to the Finance Committee, you gave them a snapshot, didn't you, of the finances? But we don't have that tonight.
Right, right, yeah. So it's, as I said, it's, it's fairly, fairly dynamic, Wendy, so we're, you know, we're, we're continuing to update that. In fact, the last guidance that we had given departments is to close out their, their purchase orders. So it's still a work in progress, but this, again, provides us with that flexibility of where we are.
And so if we approve this, I have a question about future. So when we do budgeting in the future, you're basically restating your budget, technically your actuals. Will, will this change how you do your budgets? So would we reflect the FY '25 budget amounts differently as a result of this transaction as well?
Well, typically, if you look at, I think, what was presented at town meeting, we, we present the, what the actual, actual budget was. So, so if there, this is to meet whatever expenses that may, may be in excess. So I would imagine that when we, or anticipate that when we would present the budget in the warrant for next year, it would be still based upon what the.
Approved budget.
What the approved budgets were. Right, correct. And I would say that this is something that needs to be asked annually. So there's this request, so it isn't something that you vote on at once, and it stands the test of time. It's something we have to come forward each fiscal year to make that change.
And I, I think we noted at the Finance Committee, this is not precedent-setting, but it's the first time we've done it for a town account. The schools do this on a routine basis, so.
Yes, that's correct, right.
Listening, it's not.
And my hope, Wendy, would be that we would also be instituting this on a regular basis. I, you know, I, I believe that there are, as, as I understand, because I'm new, that, you know, that there would be meetings between the Select Board and Finance Committee as we begin or begin to initiate the fiscal year '27 budget process. So I would probably be putting that same request to both of you at that time, just to have this as a way, again, it, it's more of a formality than anything else, but just to have something on the record so that we can close out the, that, that fiscal year as well.
Okay.
Mary?
Yeah, I have a question. If I understand this right, what we're doing is we're approving, moving money among different line items within the town's budget.
Mm-hmm.
Is there any risk that the aggregate will be over budget once you've trued up everything? That the spending will actually have been over budget?
The intent is, the intent is to stay, keep it under budget, but within each, you know, but to balance that.
I understand the intent, but I'm wondering, is there a risk that?
Not with this process, no, no, not with, this process wouldn't, wouldn't bring us over. Give it to the other, correct, correct.
But what if you don't have it from somewhere else to take it from?
Right, right. So that's a, sort of entirely, entirely different question right now. We're, again, we're trying to close out this fiscal year, and, you know, that, your, your question in terms of if, if we're short, it would be something that we would probably be, you know, it'd be something that would probably, I'd have to check with DOR on, but basically, it's something we'll probably raise on the recap for, for at that time.
Is there a risk that that could happen?
There are risks that, you know, there's, there's always, there's always that risk, but I, I don't anticipate that right now. I'm just trying to, at this point, close out the year in this particular, you know, this is a fairly, again, fairly simple request. So we're just trying to, again, I'm trying to understand it. We have the whole team working to close the year out and see where we're at.
Have we made any appropriations from the Finance Committee Reserve Fund?
Yeah.
We have, we have not at, at, at this point, but the money's there, it's $200,000 is still there, so, yeah.
Is that what that's for?
That's what that's for.
Okay, we have $200,000.
Yeah, that's right, that's.
Period on that usage. Right.
Would rather not use.
But it's probably fair to say, you're looking at all the accounts, and right now, you're not saying that we're over budget.
At, at, at this point, yes.
That's what you wanted to hear.
That's what.
We all want to hear, okay? Just be.
Paul, you got a question?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I thought you did. All right. Thank you.
Have a motion.
Yes.
Well, that's not the motion. Move to authorize the Chief Financial Officer to make any necessary year-end transfers under MGLC, Chapter 33B.
Any further questions or discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Good luck closing up.
All right. The moment you've all been waiting for, the Financial Reserve Policy Discussion. So this is, this is a starting point, and we had a town meeting, a fairly spirited, that's a good word. I was going to say a wide-ranging exchange of views about the, about the purposes of reserve funds and what, what we had and did not have in them, and what their purpose was. And I think that a number of us came away from that with, with the understanding that we probably needed to clarify policy on that. I have since met with Lois and Don from the Finance Committee and discussed the, the fact that we should begin a dialogue around which policies need to be, should be updated, and what purposes we, we might entertain for reserve funds, and potentially what the, how, how to think about funding reserves, either changing their level or changing the priority with which we fund reserves in the, in the annual cycle at, at a starting point. And I think we came away with the notion that it would be a good idea to, to start a working group to begin to address those questions with the idea of coming out with some workable recommendations that the Finance Committee could, could adopt in their guideline procedure. And then we could also understand whether there were any necessary actions that we were taking. As a, for example, one, one of the largely administrative actions is we, the, the reserve fund that we actually funded in this past town meeting was an extremely old one, over from like a 1960s era law. Town Council, after some research, advised us that it could be used as a general purpose stabilization fund, because it's, the law has evolved, but that's not written down. That's an opinion from, you know, based on the, the history and sort of, you know, let's call it the title search associated with that fund. So one really, I think sensible action might be to formally recommend an article that, that states the purposes of that fund, so that we, we understand that going forward. And what the exact purposes for that would be, would be some of the recommendations that we might expect to have coming out of this, this working group. So, and I also heard when we introduced this, this briefly, when we were discussing our goals for the year, that there might be an interest in also addressing some of the other policies. We, we have included in this week's packet the Town of Concord financial policies, which are dated 2017. So they haven't seen an update in a while. They cover a wide range of, of topics, not all of which are particularly in the purview of either the Finance Committee or, or the Select Board. But I think they, they do make an interesting read for, for people that like these kinds of things. And we, of course.
I did, too.
Yeah. I think, I think all of us that sort of on the Finance Committee have read this at one point or another. But the, the important, I, you know, covering things like cash management and how accounts payables are handled and so forth. But I would, you know, pose the question of if there's anything that jumped off the page as an area that might also be appropriate for this effort to, to update policies, this might be a good time to mention those.
I have a question about these policies. Were these policies ever reviewed and approved by the Finance Committee and the Select Board? Or were these policies written by the Finance Department? My understanding was these were more.
I think that's, I think that's actually true, and at least part of the discussion that we had leading up to town meeting when the reserve transfers were proposed was sort of, what is the actual process through which we review and update these policies? And who's responsible for it? I know I, for one, felt that the Finance Committee, as really the execution arm for these policies, should, should be at least consulted and potentially be in a position to recommend what they thought were policy changes, even if we are the authority that, that might actually ratify those policies. And so I think clarification of the policy update procedure is, is certainly fair game for this discussion.
Good.
No, I would agree, absolutely.
Lois, did I miss anything? Okay. Any other questions or comments?
No, I mean, I think, I think last year, you know, there was some good work that the Finance Committee did. There was some presentations on sort of levels, you know, of consideration, I think some benchmarking as to what other towns have done. And so I think we were getting into, you know, it's sort of like what, what's going to make sense. I think as we, we just got to a place there where we kind of ran out of time almost a little bit, to like, for me at least, to sort of fully understand it and say, okay, based on this, right? I mean, because these things are not, you know, putting my money into buckets, like, it, it doesn't in and of itself create more money or take more money away, but, but it can have an impact when you start talking about like bond ratings and things like that, which impacts interest rates. So there are some considerations to say, hey, look, if you are trying to optimize how we're sort of running the financials. This is sort of some levels that you, that you want to consider. And then there's maybe some other ones that are a little bit more optional, right? Hey, if you want to stabilize how you're paying off debt for certain projects, you know, you can do this. May or may not actually have a big sort of overall net financial impact. So I just feel like we need to finish that sort of discussion with, with the Finance Committee, and then kind of say, okay, based on that, here's, you know, here's what we really want to add.
I also do think it's a work group, a real hands-on working group, working through some of those details, because they're very nuanced kind of issues, and they do become very town-specific. And I think even the Finance Committee, when we were talking about it, wanted multiple members represented in the work group also, because there were different viewpoints even within the Finance Committee on those issues. So I think a work group is definitely the right approach. And I'm going to volunteer for that.
That's great. Paul?
My very imperfect knowledge of stabilization funds. There are special purpose funds that designate for specific purposes, but they can be general.
Yes.
Capital. I'm just wondering, since we're going to have some very specific needs, municipal needs, whether we should think of more specific uses of the stabilization funds rather than general buckets? Just as, if they are sort of planning for the future, making sure we have that money available.
Yeah.
We sort of know the several priorities we know right now. They're not general capital needs, there are those, but there's some specific needs. Public safety, for example, we might think of, you know, of that type.
The risk of, of being, you know, somebody actively providing a counter example, the town has made use of specific purpose stabilization funds fairly regularly for large capital projects in the past. What, what's new here is that we have not generally made use of a general stabilization fund. Instead, we have normally depended on our free cash and free cash certification to handle that. The, the proposal that the Finance Committee brought forward last, in this last cycle, was to augment that sort of free cash balance with a general purpose stabilization fund. And I think behind that, it represented a concern that our overall level of undesignated reserves was insufficient to potentially maintain our bond rating over time. And that's going to be somewhat a matter of opinion amongst people who, who follow the bond market and the bond rating agencies. But I think that it's, it's certainly worthy of discussion and, and revision over time. And, you know, one of the questions that I asked at the time and continue to ask is, once we decide, for example, that we're going to change what that target level is, then how do we think about it in terms of prioritization? Because to the point that's often made at this table, when you take, that money comes from someplace, it comes from taxes. And if we increase those level of reserves, we, we are essentially agreeing that we're going to tax ourselves in order to maintain those funds, which are there specifically to support the bond rating, which has tangible impact on our financials for sure. But we need to also recognize that that's money that we're not spending on for something else, and that we're asking taxpayers to provide in, in terms of support. So I think we need to be very thoughtful about how we do that. And once we make the commitment to do it, I, I, I think that bond rating agencies, they obviously look at the, the numbers, but they also look at how good are you at making your, you know, making commitment and following through on that commitment. If you say you're going to do something and then you don't do it, that, I think, is also damaging to the, to the town's reputation and creditworthiness.
Can I follow up on that? You're, you're right, Mark, that this was kind of a new type of, of stabilization fund. It was more of a general. And it's not when, but if we do this, there could be other uses for this. One might be to give it back to the town. One might be to give it back to the taxpayers because in fact, you could argue that one of the reasons we have so much free cash right now is we tax too much. But um, I will say that I don't want to lose sight of the fact that while we're thinking about philosophically? And and it is a good policy debt to to develop a general stabilization fund. Lose sight of the fact that we also want to consider a specialized stabilization fund for the capital projects that we know are coming forward. So one is more a philosophical argument and one is more a real need that we have. And I think we could find agreement on that a lot easier than we can find agreement on the more general stabilization fund.
And remember, they were talking about at the town meeting, we were considering a a debt stabilization fund and a capital stabilization? And the million dollars into the generalization, so that's what I think got us really, let's.
Yes.
Into the, sorry, Lois, go ahead.
Forward. One of the things that the finance committee identified.
Get really close.
You really do need to get close, don't you? One of the things that um we've identified is um a set of tools. The um Department of Local Services, just its DLS, has some really robust tools for this. Um, as part of a working group charge, we can look at sample policies, we can look at. Get guidance from what the state recommends and we can get guidance from what our um cohort town can do. And we can really do something that's thoughtful, Mary. And it creates a frame around this. And a lot of the examples given in these um in these tools that the state makes available are very specifically funded expectations. The one that makes me smile is the four hundred thousand dollar fire truck that. So that basically, yeah.
I said it.
They suggest you save up for.
Right.
We, we have resources available to us. We don't have time as full committees with all the deadlines that we deal with to get into those resources. But I think we have a willingness on the part of um certain members of finance committee and I I I think the select board? To separate out some time and devote some real effort into doing this. And I think we can go into the next town meeting? Um, with some of our thinking on this. And um, I think a working group can come back to the select board with some suggestions. That have already been vetted through that process and that will could be a very collaborative and constructive event.
So I'm inclined to to accept the working group notion and and move on that. I'm wondering how formal we need to make that, whether we could just detail some some people from individual committees? Or do we have to go through a whole charge process to? Have have you given any thought to the composition from the finance committee side?
Oh, we have a meeting coming up in two weeks. And um, if the select board is ready to move on this? I am confident we will find enthusiasm to participate in this on the finance committee.
I'm thinking if we if we sort of detail a subquorum to to participate in this process? We could make it informal rather than.
So I I don't know.
That's okay.
I don't know, I do remember last year on the flag thing, there was something about whether you volunteered or you were appointed that made it official or not, so I'm not sure.
Was the pilot working group, it was really sweet. It was Mary, me, CFO, and we brought the assessor in as we do. That was a very discreet project. I'm like, but that group, I don't think there was a formal charge, was there?
No, it was only, no.
I think that's because it was one person.
It was one person per committee and we used, we worked with the Collins Center.
Yes, we did.
Yes.
Well, yes.
Yeah.
We did.
Okay.
Yeah.
Are people comfortable following that model?
One person?
Yeah.
I'm I'm okay with it.
Wendy?
Okay, yeah.
Okay.
I'm volunteering.
Let's do that.
Finance committee will be right there with you.
All right.
Sounds good.
Thank you, Wendy.
Thank you, Wendy. Thank you, Lois. Okay. Now, we're gonna ride along. We're seeing that we're doing a lot to set up our work for this year, which is good. I know, and there's a lot of it. The land use working group charge, I appreciate the fact that the land use working group has had their um single meeting already. I think Shannon's gonna support us with with maybe projecting this, but you have, I believe on the table in front of you? A proposed amendment to the land use working group charge. Um, this is a starting point. After the direct, after the the single meeting that they had? Uh, we concluded and the town clerk helped us conclude? That the um appointment of an ex officio member of the two 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 nine Main Street Task Force or their designate? Was not going to work considering that that member is also a member of the select board? And cannot represent anything other than the select board on the town committee. So this this update? Uh, reconciles that by changing really two simple things. Um, it says that the membership of the land use working group would be two members of the select board? And no longer include anyone from the representing twenty-two twenty-nine Main Street Task Force specifically.
It's also that 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 doesn't.
Doesn't exist anymore.
I think that's.
So, yeah.
That's.
But it was also the issue that a select board member can't sit on a committee representing something else.
So why?
And the only other administrative change was to add the MCI Concord Vision Plan, which was just published? Since we touched this last to the documents that we expected to be consulted, but that's, I think, a matter. So Cameron has a question.
So why would we have two members of the select board on a, representing a committee? I mean, we have sixty-something committees, we always have one.
Yeah.
Person.
That's a good question and we don't have to do it that way. The the thinking in my mind was because we still? Would do well in this particular working group to avail ourselves of the expertise? Oh, that Paul brings to the table, which is unique to twenty-two twenty-nine Main Street. Um, we, this this would allow us to keep the representation that that was um proposed. It does have the downside of creating a ten-voting member working group? Which makes their quorum more complex to to manage. But assuming that this group is going to be focused on that, the all, the other alternative? Would be, you know, to actually remain one member of the select board and then we'd have to discuss who that would be.
So those are, those are the two primary choices in my mind.
Wendy had a question and then I'd love to hear from Paul and Mary since they both participated in that in that working group meeting.
Remember the select board, who's that? It brings the two-two-two-nine institutional? Or memory and information, that's pure and simple what it is.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, we have a lot of different land parcels.
Yeah, no, I guess I I remember when this first came up and Mary will recall, I didn't really want two people from the select board on here. And at the time, I think we even made Paul's role non-voting.
That's right.
Yes.
So now it's ten voting members, but and it is important for Paul because he does have a long history with two-two-two-nine? And that's a key parcel that this land group has to really delve into. So um, well, I don't want two members, I do want Paul's experience there and I, you know, we're down the path now that I'm like? Let's just move forward, we have to get this committee going.
Well, I mean, moving forward and getting the committee going, it's already started.
Started with the members.
I mean, two members or one.
Um, no, but I do think Paul's experience is really critical to this committee because at the other time, we'd also talked about other other members who could. But actually, some of those members are not here anymore.
My status is momentarily in limbo.
Well, I I do think that we bring different um experiences to the committee. I think Paul brings two-two-two-nine Maine, but he doesn't really bring the select board.
Perspective.
Perspective because he's been on the select board a month now, right? And I think you, so I think what I can bring is the select boards, um, the experience of being on the select board. So I think that's the value of having both of us and the committee is large enough and certainly varied enough? That um, I think we can.
Yeah, I mean, you know, I'm gonna have a different viewpoint, I guess, as I often do. Um, I mean, I volunteered for this committee, I do integrated planning for a living. Um, so you know, one could argue, hey, why not add me too? Right? Hey, let's have, let's have a whole bunch of people, I mean, sure, I mean, on every committee, you know, there's expertise that we bring?
Yeah.
That's that's, you know, we go down the list of sixty-five committees and let's talk about, hey, you know, I I know this, I know that, you know this, you know that. Just to me, again, it's sort of like, we don't have any committees that have multiple select board members. It's awkward to put, I mean, we designed it to have nine members for a reason.
Yeah.
Right? And now we're kind of just rationalizing like, well, you know, let's just sort of? Kind of not follow precedent and not do it the way we always do it. Just kind of create an awkward situation and um, so I mean, I don't really understand the rationale.
Okay. Any further comments? Right here in motion.
I'm gonna make a motion to amend the land use working group charge as discussed during the select board meeting.
Second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Lois in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Okay. I think that given that that passes, thank you. Um, we also would need to? Make a reappointment, just to be absolutely clear. Um, we'd already appointed Mary as the select board designate. Uh, we had appointed Paul as this ex officio member, I think we need a motion to revoke that appointment. Reappoint him as a select board member.
I'll make a motion that we revoke um the original nomination.
Do we normally do this now or do we? I'm just asking a procedural question.
Well, we don't normally do this ever. So we're we're we're. Now, we're we're in slightly, as you pointed out, we're in slightly unusual territory. This is, and I will make the comment in response to that question? That while we do do major strategic planning from time to time? Those, that work is not the the work that is normally done by the sort of operational committees. And we have um, it really, you know, I'm gonna use the word messy set? Of decisions and and planning to navigate. Uh, I know some of you observed the the MCI Advisory Board meeting this afternoon. Um, and we have received a great deal of information about MCI. And I would say that that team, which is a, which is a very talented team? And is working very hard, still has a lot of unanswered questions and a lot of uncertainty about which way to go. And that's just one of the parcels that we're asking this land use group to wrestle. And I think it, you know, the the fact is that this is going to be difficult and challenging work. And we do need to um access the specific expertise. It would be way too easy to overlook twenty-two twenty-nine Main Street or say it's too hard? Or say it's because, you know, we're we're not familiar enough with it, so we're not going to touch it? And potentially forego an important piece of this? Complex puzzle about how to reallocate um town properties or potential town properties? Um, to the best use of services of the town and hopefully, you know, really obtain some operational efficiencies in that. So um, the reason that I think we're taking this, I'll call it unusual step? Is because looking at the available? Um, resources that we have to apply to to this complicated and necessary long-term question? I personally see that 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 we will do well by by taking this decision now. So I think we had a motion.
Uh, well, we didn't really, let me say it again, so I'm gonna make a motion that we revoke Paul Bones? Um, ex officio membership on the, from, as a two-two-two-nine Task Force member? Um, on the land use group, but become, but but nominate Paul for membership as a full select board designate.
Second.
Any further questions or discussion? Lois in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you. Okay, so I guess that will leave us with an appointment to do the next time around. It's here.
There was a nomination?
There was a nomination as worded, but.
Okay.
Okay. But still, when is the land use working group meeting again?
Tomorrow, tomorrow at five.
Okay.
We're not gonna take a vote on anything.
Okay. Good.
Oh, oh, I want to, before we leave this topic?
Yes.
I'd like to ask the board, is the board willing to um present to the land use working group a nomination for the chair? And let them discuss and vote?
Oh.
I don't see why the working group wouldn't take up the chair, wouldn't they?
They would, I'm asking them to um vote on a nomination.
Oh, okay, so you're asking them to make a nomination and then?
No, asking us to make a nomination and they would have to vote. They would do, so it's a start to to the conversation. It's also, it's it's a, not only is the start, but it's? It does mean that we do have a person that we think we should nominate. Wouldn't it make? Question.
I'm not in favor of that, I think the land, I think the working group should have that discussion and? Come up with their own.
Do you have the sense that there's a consensus on the working group about who the, who their leader should be?
I think that we've got a good idea of some candidates, yes.
Have we asked the candidates if they're interested in being nominated?
Yes.
Both?
Yes.
Correct.
Yeah. And one isn't, one isn't.
Oh, really? Well.
It's easy to block.
Yeah.
So I I feel.
Make a nomination tomorrow, we don't have to.
Yeah.
I can just do that.
Okay.
That's it. Tomorrow.
Okay, we'll do it tomorrow, so it's not a, it's not a discussion here, it's a discussion tomorrow.
I think that makes sense. Okay. All right, that brings us to.
Our manager evaluation.
Um, manager evaluation, so Jess is gonna walk us through and I think Jess, am I the only one that has this?
You are, that was just my broken.
All right.
Near identical to last year with the exception of goals, obviously, we certainly reflect that.
So we're, we don't have that in front of us.
So let me, let me intro it this way. Um, the town manager is um is obviously not here tonight and that's for reasons of illness. But she, she, given the fact that she was scheduled to return from vacation today? I had communicated with her that although we had receiving herself evaluation on the on the schedule? It didn't seem to be completely fair to expect that that was going to be done during vacation time. So I had allotted an additional week um with the expectation that the self-evaluation will be delivered back to us? By the beginning of next week, so that we'll begin to be able to to do that. Um, I've asked Jess, um, who in the last year supported our town manager evaluation process? By receiving the feedback that that we had? And to put together a calendar, which will get us to a completed evaluation? On the timeframe that we had discussed when we were reviewing and and updating the the town manager's contract this year? Which basically calls for us to try to be done by the end of August. So um, this is a schedule that she's she's put together and and an opportunity to ask questions about the process.
Thank you, so understanding that the self-evaluation uh from the town manager will be hopefully in your hands uh early next week? Uh, in theory, between now and August eighteenth? It would be um asked of the select board members if they could go through the self-evaluation? Write their reviews and schedule meetings with the town manager to go over uh any questions or anything on their written reviews that they may have? And then I would request that everything. And then I would request that everything uh, be sent to me by Friday, which actually should be Friday, August fifteenth, I believe is the, the Friday.
I think you meant to say August eighth, not eighteen.
August eighth. Sorry, I wrote eighteen, but yeah.
Wait, so which one's August eighth?
So, uh, between now and August eighth, uh, you'll be able to review the town manager's self-evaluation. And then also write your own individual reviews of the town manager and then schedule those meetings with the town manager one-on-one to go through um, any questions you may have for her on either, you know, goal updates, the review itself, et cetera.
Meeting with her by the eighth?
Yes.
Yeah, so there's, the idea would be
The meetings, that's too tight, I think.
So, we, we typically, we typically have one-on-ones with the, with the town manager. So the idea would be sometime between um, next Monday, which is the twenty-first and August eighth, you probably have a one-on-one scheduled and make your comments and have a, have a dialogue that, based on the, the self-evaluation which you will have received in preparation for writing your own input to the overall evaluation. You can take that opportunity to discuss with the town manager what you may want to
What's the deadline for that?
August.
Comments into the evaluation?
Your reviews would be submitted by August fifteenth to Jessica. For compilation.
The fifteenth is written, okay.
Yes, so that is a three-week window of time, which is the same timeframe you had last year.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And then it gives you a few extra days app between the eighth and the fifteenth to get everything finalized and sent to me. I'll then compile that and then hopefully we might be able to actually conduct the review at the August twenty-eighth uh, select board meeting and get it in right before the end of August.
Let's be clear, so the August, August eighth.
Can we also just comment that Paul probably doesn't have the same level of review and participation?
So.
Yeah, so.
Typically, typically what we do is the, we, we ask for input from any board members that were serving in the last year and anybody who left. And you're free to observe and, you know, and read the evaluation and by all means discuss it with the town manager, but you're not expected to evaluate because you weren't in that position. Okay. You're, in other words, you're, you're off the hook and we'll, and we'll be calling Terry to see if she's um, willing to provide.
Be really helpful if I just had simple schedule, the date, the three dates that I need to remember.
Yep, absolutely. I can send that out. I was just able to confirm it this morning. Um, so I can certainly send something out. So you all have it in your email.
You'll have those deadlines.
They do have somewhat related questions. So, after the cycle, recommendations for modi- modification of the evaluation process, when when could those be made? Is, is there a process for doing that? Um, or to be doing it the same way?
Well, we, we talked about it a lot. We've tried to refine it some.
Yeah.
Yeah. In terms of the dates and in terms of like how we do it and we
Right.
So
So in parallel for this, we, we will also begin to start talking about what the town manager's goals are. So there, and I, I don't have it in front of me, but there's a, there, we'll look at the town manager's draft goals for their, for this current year and begin to discuss that. So the idea is to have the evaluation for the prior year completed and the goals in place for the new year, all at least by the beginning of September, so that we're not you know, four months into the current evaluation period without having those goals set.
Well, a specific question, have you ever discussed a three-sixty evaluation?
We have.
Yeah.
You know what? We did actually talk about having um
You're right.
Some of the town department leads participate this year, so I don't know, Jess, if you've had that.
Part of the plan?
It, well, it should be. That's what we talked about doing.
That, that would be part of the next cycle, the one that we're starting in, not the one that we're just completing.
So the one I'd be part of?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, right.
And
So we're not doing it?
Really? So we're not?
Okay.
Yeah, because we, we didn't really have them on notice that they should be, you know, collecting that information. The, the other um, active conversation that is relative to the personnel board, when um, Bill Maraschek was here last, we discussed that one of our objectives is to have the personnel board specifically help evaluate the, the personnel practices and, and HR function of the towns. Is that something that we typically do not handle? At this board, and so we ask them to, to begin to be prepared to do that. And, and my proposal is that we will ask them to to compile what they think for this next cycle as well, so that that's, that expectation is also agreed to by the town manager and instant, i- implemented within the goals that they're, that they have. Makes sense?
Yes, and uh, just, there will be additional discussion by the personnel board at the August thirteenth meeting on that topic. For anybody interested in wanting to tune into that.
Okay.
Good.
So, there'll be a note that comes out that, that identifies the dates, but basically next Monday you should have an evaluation, a self-evaluation from the town manager.
Yep.
You have until um, August eighth, but more importantly, August fifteenth, to get your to have a conversation with the town manager and get your input to Jessica.
Okay, very good, so.
Hopefully that's straightforward enough.
Last year, when we have the, the public meeting for the personnel review, I'll put together a PowerPoint slide and my idea this year is to show the ratings for this year, but then also show some historical perspective. And then year after year, we can add that to have a history of the ratings from year over year.
And Jess, can you remind me, the weighting, because it, the scoring was a little funny. It's sort of depends on everything that's in the evaluation. So is it like equal weighting for every line that's in the evaluation?
Yes, I just took the, the average of all the ratings that were received. Um, and I factored in, for some reason, there was a category where somebody didn't rate. I tried to follow up with them to say, hey, you missed this one, did you mean to leave it blank? And they all meant to put something in, so then I adjusted that. Um, and then it's just simply taking the average. And again, there's the two sections. The first one is the section on the goal achievement, and then the second section is just general uh, leadership attributes. So the second half of the form is identical to last year. The first half um, will change, because it's gonna be populated with the goals for fiscal twenty-five.
That was another discussion in the evaluation, weighting and
Yeah.
Topics, so.
Okay. Good. Any further questions?
No, very good.
Thank you, Jess. Okay. Goals. So, um, in the packet this week is the merged and um hopefully nearly final version of, of our goals for this year. They, they got longer. I think I managed to capture the um, the suggestions as submitted to, to Shannon. Any comments, questions, corrections?
Uh, my only comment was on the one that had just still had questions marks on it, or commercial development, so I just wasn't sure what.
I wanted to, I wasn't sure exactly.
It's G.
G one, develop a plan for increasing commercial revenues through increases in percentage of taxable entities relative to residential. And uh, my recollection is that um, two of you submitted sort of competing metrics for this. So I didn't, um, I didn't know and I, I thought there was a viable argument for both of them and at the top, off the top of my head, I can't remember if you, if you wanna say what you, what you had in mind. Um, but increases in the percentage of taxable entities versus um
Or the percentage of revenue that comes from
Percentage of revenue, yeah, so.
You know, how do we get it from six or seven percent to like eight or ten?
You have to grow.
But that's not gonna happen in one year either, so like how do you?
We have to grow the business. I don't think that's the right metric.
Yeah, I, it did, it struck me that it didn't wanna send the message that we were just gonna take the same businesses that we have and tax them more. That didn't seem to be the spirit. It seemed to be the spirit was to try to get more entities, in other words, more businesses that are all paying hopefully the same.
Thing would be, what, what do we actually, a, a goal for us would be, what is, what do we think the target should be?
Yeah.
And, and then what do we think are some steps that could get us towards that, that target, right? So like, hey, if we're here, we wanna get to here, and we think, you know, these are the things that will Yeah, I, I
You know, is it something we should do after we do partly the land use? I mean, some of this is sort of, what opportunities do we have? We don't have a lot of opportunities right now.
I think a quantitative bill is probably not appropriate, but we gotta outline what the steps are. I mean, how, how do you measure if commercial?
Well, I mean, a quantitative bill could be appropriate, I just, I think we have to, we don't know what it is sitting here.
But in one, in one year, it's gonna be tough to do.
No, no, I'm not saying a goal it will. I'm saying just establishing where, what is the goal? Like, what, what is it that we're, all I'm saying is we should be trying to figure out what we want.
Got it, there you go.
Commercial revenues.
It is, but are we gonna go from six to ten? Are we trying to go from six to eight? Do we look at what other towns do? What do we think is a reasonable benchmark?
I think what we're asking here is we're asking, what's the role of the economic vitality committee and what's the role of the economic vitality director? So, um, if we're truly serious about commercial development, then I think maybe looking at the charge that we've written for that committee, which that committee is looking at by economic vitality, not specifically not developed. So, if we're, the, I mean, this is a much bigger problem than we're gonna solve in it in a year. It's, and it's, and it's mark, and it's market-driven. And the truth is, is that our commercial property that we have right now is obsolete. That's the truth. Um, so
And we have infrastructure issues.
And we have, and we have infrastructure, there you, thank you. We have infrastructure issues. So I mean, I mean, yeah, I guess I
But how do we, so what I'm saying is, I, I'm agreeing with, but how do we s- how do we start? How do we do, like, what are the, what are the things we can, we're not gonna solve in one year. We're not, we're not. Right? But, but what can we do to make progress?
Example on the other, this regulatory reviews, or the reviews of our regulations that impede commercial development, that, for, you know, departments, I, I mean, but I think
That's, that's big. That's, that's really big. Um, yes, there are, are they I mean, I, they're starting right now at the retail level, at the, you know, at the, but at the um, villages, we're looking at how did we get people into the villages, how do we make sure that we have turnover in our storefronts? How do we make sure we don't have empty storefronts? Um, and that I think is what the economic vitality committee is focused on now. And I think that's consistent with their charge. This is, this is big, right? And um I don't know how to get started on this, I shouldn't, it's, it's, it, it's infrastructure, it's how do we get uh, the people who own the commercial property in town to update it appropriately. Uh, it's I mean, I have no problem leaving it here, but I, let's be realistic, it's huge.
I don't wanna leave it if we can't achieve it or we don't understand how to even get started about that, right?
Plan.
Well, this, this calls for developing, it should be a plan, develop a plan
Yeah.
For increasing commercial tax revenues through increases in the percentage of taxable entities rel- relative to residential. So
You're right, it is a plan. But I think part of that is what Jerry says, I mean you need a development
It's a plan for a transition. It is. It's a plan for a plan. It's almost like, what are the variables we have to consider? What are the, you know, what are the options that you would sort of undertake to try to do something like this?
But who is, who's gonna do this?
Other towns.
Who's gonna do this?
Well, I think that we, we, we've talked about the fact that we need to put some of these in front of some of the many tax committees, like it's, so economic vitality comes to mind is certainly one of them. And, and land use comes to, comes to mind as another one. Um, making sure that, that we are creating the opportunity for businesses to, to be created in town. You know, that plays directly into which scenario do we favor on the MCI?
Yeah.
Exactly.
Recommendations. If we look at that visioning plan, the market is telling us if you want that to be, you know positive and, and quickly revenue positive to the town
Yep.
build residential properties, but that exactly conflicts with this. Because if we want, we, if we adopt the longer si- the longer development cycle, the longer investment cycle to make at least part of that property commercially attractive, we, we need to we'd have to make some different decisions about, about what our priorities are there.
Mary, in some sense, it's a distributed responsibility. I mean, asking all the departments, yeah, we wanna move in this direction. What are your suggestions? What can
Yeah.
What is it in your domain that you could un- unleash or?
In some ways, it really supports some of the other goals we have arranged, especially around wastewater, right? Let's make some progress there and about um
Limiting constraints.
I don't know.
So, I'm gonna suggest that what we do is, um, we will put a review of how we're getting to those, these, if we adopt these as goals and recognize that it is a goal, I'll remove the question marks and we, and we'll just um, then have to strategize about how to do it. And I think that's, you know, that's sensible. I recognize that, that in introducing this goals topic, I also have been wanting to, and we keep on having long meetings, so we're not getting there, but wanna talk about what the goals are going into the future years. So we may not be talking about FY twenty-six when something like this happens, but we may be teeing it up for what, you know, in a, in a budgeting sense, in a planning sense, what can we, what can we start baking in
Yep.
to FY twenty-seven, which is the budget that's actually getting built in the next couple of months, that would be supportive of a goal like this.
Okay. I have a question about one of the other goals on here. It's um, let me see, section two, letter F, number two. Examine impact of affordable housing new developments on town budgets and tax impacts across different taxpayer groups. When a developer comes into the planning board, don't they have to fill out uh, an impact statement? As part of the application?
It's an impact statement, um like, they couldn't tell you about the s- the schools.
Schools.
They can't. I mean, some of that comes out.
Municipal services or
Right. Isn't that what we're asking them to do? I mean, shouldn't, is, isn't that what the planning boards should be doing? I mean, I guess I'm wondering, is this a, it feels to me like this is something that the planning board is being asked to do on the applications that developers bring. I mean, I know when Sims came in front of us years ago, we actually asked them to put together an economic impact statement. And I, I, and I know the planning board um, sometimes does, sometimes doesn't. But I'm thinking, um
I mean, I feel like, I mean, I'm the one who probably put that down. I mean, I feel like you're talking about individual projects.
Yeah.
I'm
New development.
More holistically than just like, hey, here's a project, oh, it'll have this many, you know, parking spaces or you know, more, more broadly, like, what are we, when we look at impact on number of housing units, impact on schools, impact on municipal services, impact on you know overall taxes, that kind of thing.
What do you mean by different taxpayer groups?
Yeah, I didn't understand that at all.
What does that mean?
It just means there's a broad spectrum of people that, and companies and things that
But we all pay the same tax rate. It's based on the assessed value of our homes, so
We don't, well, not in RT, we don't.
Well, it is one tax.
Traffic they're getting at?
No, not necessarily, Doc, but I mean, it just, there's different impacts, right? When things are subsidized, not subsidized.
No?
No.
What do you mean subsidized?
No.
You mean affordable housing, but that's not taxpayer. Is this, so let me just say, so Cameron, you're trying to say this, these are, this whole section, actually, I had questions about, so utilize benchmarks to establish budget efficiency. Is this sort of a budget development goal that we wanted to include as we put forth budgets? Is that kind of what we're trying to get to in that? And then uh, the debt level?
Yeah. To establish town budget efficiency opportunities.
Okay, so that's kind of an ask perhaps of the town manager and the schools, and when they put their budgets together. Um, and then understanding the debt level and tax impacts, I'd like to think that something like that is actually gonna come out of our capital planning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Team are obviously gonna get, right, we're already getting
And we are gonna receive a report from the RDE tax committee.
Get two of them.
Cause that's
Right.
We instituted them, so they are gonna, so I guess I'm wondering why are we calling these out separately when a lot of these things are things that are already done as part of our, our regular business?
Well, why would we look under organizational capacity and say we wanna have fully staffed town department? I mean, we've what are the areas that we're gonna focus on? Are we gonna focus on financial impacts and, and
Yeah, I'm fine with that category, but.
Or are we gonna, I mean, we could take out that section and not have any financial. Goals as the select board. We could just say, hey, let's not focus on numbers or budgets.
I'm, I'm fine with the general category, but I think the specifics are kind of, I, I wonder what the intent of some of these specifics are and. You know, I, I.
Benchmarks, tax impacts, cost impacts, impacts on services, impacts on debt levels, capital. Different things where we're gonna invest capital and, and.
Well, we're doing it. We're doing these things. We're already doing these things. What is the intent here?
The clear gov. Um, tool that's in place actually does help us with, with benchmarking against. Other communities that have similar bud- similar budgets and sizes. So, I, I'm pretty comfortable with that one. Um, I, I read the, the impact of affordable. Housing and new development on town budgets and tax impact. I, I, I kinda stopped there. So, I was thinking about it in terms of the, the conversation that we're having about certain types of development. End up being a net, net drain on town services because. You know, let's face it, the, the, how the median single family home tax. Bill doesn't cover one student for one year. In our school district. So, there is. Cross subsidization of services that goes on amongst these. And so, you know, I think that. Affordable housing and new development, we do need to understand that if we. Under certain develops, development scenarios, those are going to have impacts on budgets. I don't, I don't necessarily agree that they impact. Different taxpayers differently. I think that they tend to impact all taxpayers in the same way. Um, directionally. Um. So, from that perspective, I think that when we contemplate. What type of? Because we, we're, we're on the verge, again, going back to the land use group. We've got significant parcels of land that we're gonna have to decide how to zone. And when we decide how we're going to zone them, we're going to. Imply a certain, certain types of de- development that are likely to occur on the, on those properties over time. And that is going to have an impact on service and budgets. And so, I was reading it from that perspective and, and thought, thought of it as. As, as a useful. Maybe that wasn't always necessarily intended, but that, that's how I. Um, giving it the benefit of the doubt. Um, again. I think we do understand debt levels, and again, I went to the, you know. Capital investment strategies means exactly how do you go to the capital markets and when you go to the capital markets? I think that's a fair. Fair question to, to be looking at too. Um, you know, I've made no secret of the fact that I'm not really a fan of the. Debt structure of the, of the middle school project, because I believe that that created a thirty-year-long block that is gonna be.
Right. If you have to go build municipal buildings, when can you afford to do it? When does? When do you?
Can I add something to this category? As long as we're in the affordability and budgeting category, I, I know nowhere in here do we actually. Um, reiterate our commitment to, um, affordable housing, which was a clear goal of the community expressed in the vision. Conquer document as well as the housing production plan. So, I think somewhere we need to capture that. In this, um, in this document.
I do think that, that, you know, looking over it again, I, I did realize that. I tend to think of affordable housing as a goal, as a, as table stakes for what we're doing, but it, if, you know, without looking at it in. Right next to last year's, it doesn't come out there. Where, because we're talking about land use and development, so.
Right, right.
I, I could be, I could be convinced that we should, um, add an H. You know, achieve the housing production plan.
We should.
Housing goals.
Thank you. And then one other thing, based on the conversation we had tonight with our community. Um, I, I don't know if we really captured. Other civility, tolerance and inclusion. Do people think we, we captured? What we need to do in response to what's happening? Promote community dialogue. Uh, is there a stronger statement we could make there?
We should be, take more of a leadership role, but I'm not sure how we're gonna, it's with the DEIB.
Mm-hmm.
And the schools together.
Yeah. This, this was in the can before.
Right, I know, you know.
Yeah, these are the elements, what we were talking about.
Yeah, I'm just thinking of.
Supporting jurisdictions.
This feels.
Unify with the school committee. I mean, these are pretty specific.
Well, this feels kind of vanilla to me. I'm wondering if, um. Just a stronger statement.
Okay.
Up to you.
The essence is here.
We, we heard the call for some strong action.
Um, I'll accept, uh, does anybody have any wording they wanna? Cause I would like to, I would like to vote.
You could say take strong action.
Provide leaderships.
But what, what's that mean?
I know, I know, I know. Well.
I don't, I don't have.
Now that I'm looking at it, I don't have any.
Okay.
I guess I'd like the word action in there. Promote, promote community action and dialogue.
Okay.
And education.
Provide leadership in promoting community action and dialogue.
Thank you. That's good.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah, it works good.
It's recorded, so it's done.
Provide leadership.
Provide leadership promoting community action and dialogue.
Thank you.
Under letter C there.
So, I have a question on completely different place. So, going back, um, to the first page, one A on the wastewater treatment plant. It says, well, um, we'll, we'll complete the transfer and agreement will be in place with, with the state. Uh, we have a big funding issue here. I mean, there's a huge amount of money that it's gonna take to improve the wastewater treatment plant and. I wonder if, are we gonna say this is in place, or we have to negotiate with the state for this, right? Is this an appropriate goal at this time? For the wastewater treatment?
Um.
I mean, I'm support, I, I want us to move forward as, as far as we can, but there's a big dollar. I'm looking at one A four.
Four.
Which is a wastewater treatment plant, which, you know, we wanna. Decision to acquire, I get, capital plan is done, great, but transfer agreement with the state in place. That, that means we've completed our negotiation and we're ready to put potentially funds up. I, I don't know, it's all negotiation.
Realistically, that may be further than we'll get this year.
Yeah.
Um. Not having the wrong possibility, but they said a free facility is further down the track than it is. Than, than any other portion of, of MCI. Um, we do, are, we. And I, I tried to get Alan to remind me of the dates, but there is a, I think, six-month window or a hun-. Hundred and eighty days that we had to, to begin negotiation and we, and I think everybody's expecting that there'll be some sort of. Extension over that. Um, there's the, um, just like everything else on MCI, there was a lot of work going on. Gathering information and data about the system. Um, that is, that is now being digested and, and, and understood. Um, not least today's meeting, the, there's a. Election system issues with the northeastern, with the. The, um.
Department of Correction.
Yeah, Department of Correction Farm, which is really off-site, but it's how the wastewater from there gets in. Which is going to be a big bill for the state. Um, they'll have to figure that out. It's not really our problem. But it does raise the question of if that bill is big enough. Do they have onsite capacity? Might they try to exit the system? There's a lot of things that are, that are.
Yeah.
Really not, not. Well, understood yet in terms of who might do what, um, as we negotiate that, so.
It's not before the decision whether to acquire or decision to acquire. The book is.
Yeah, I, I think it's, it's a decision about whether to acquire.
Whether to acquire.
Yeah, and if, if so, then the capital plan is done and transferred.
Yeah, I mean, there's a dependency in the first two items.
Yeah.
Or maybe it's just this agreement should be in process or.
Okay.
Yeah.
I actually like the fact that some of the ways these are written are really action-oriented to kind of get them done.
I agree.
I, I really liked that a lot about. Some of this.
I mean, there, there are questions about the, you know, is this the right thing to do? But I think, you know, I think the. Those of us that look at this, understand that, you know, this is the only wastewater treatment permit. It's likely to ever come our way.
Right, this is it.
This is it. So, so the question is, is can we negotiate a way to, to acquire it or not? Um, and I think we need to set an aggressive goal to, 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 um, to work on that.
It's a bit like two, two, two-nine. It's something we'd like to acquire, but we, we negotiate the terms and the finances to do it.
Right. And the timing of the cleanup.
Yeah.
Right. So, it's not, it's not the only track and. You know. When I, when I set, set a set of goals in place for, in, you know, I, I like. To actually have not every goal be a slam dunk. Uh, that doesn't, that doesn't make sense to me. It seems to me that if, if the goal doesn't hurt a little bit to get to, then you're, you're kind of not working hard out.
This is quite a set of goal.
No kidding, no kidding.
A, a, a little knit on, uh. Number two. E two A of the pilot program. What, what is actually ten percent of identified? Is that two or? Is that number, what is ten percent by identified organization? And is that a puny goal or is that a good goal? I like to say the pilot program.
So.
Aggressively, but.
Yeah, so this is continue pilot program. So, ten percent of identified organizations would, uh, uh. What was the number of organizations that we approached?
But I think, I think it's one of these eighty, twenty rules where, you know, twenty percent of the people on the list will. Provide eighty percent of the revenue.
Yeah, that.
There, there's something we could actually put a number on it, because we know. We, we've estimated what the pilot could deliver if fully implemented, right?
Well, a list, a list of the, a list would be helpful.
We had, I don't remember.
We had, we've had a list, we have a potential.
Right.
Generation, and so.
And, and if none of those. If none of those largest organizations come through, this would be a very small contribution.
Exactly. Then it's a no-go.
If, if only the smallest ones come forward, it's.
It'll be great.
It'll be great. But I, I think that when I was doing it, I was thinking about the idea that. Ideally, we would want to reach an agreement with virtually everyone on that list or something. And, you know, it seemed to me that for a pilot, for a program that's just getting started. Even being able to talk to ten percent of, of those groups. And get to an agreement would be something that would be pretty significant over where we are today, where we have, I think you count on one hand.
And then go look to talk to all of them.
It would, it would, but the first, the first ten percent.
Get agreements, son of, we gotta talk to all of them.
I think what you meant by the ten percent were the ten top. Assessed values.
I'd be happy to find, to think we were able to have productive conversations with any significant portion of. Of all of those organizations, recognizing that, that.
Yeah.
It's a diverse group of organizations, from some of them very modest to some of them very substantial.
One of the recommendations that we got from the Collins Group, which I mentioned earlier when Lois was here. Was they recommended that when we go out to ask people that were uniform in our approach and were uniform in our ask.
Okay.
Um, so it's something we wanna keep in mind.
Okay. Yeah, I, I saw some of those elements coming through in what was presented already.
Yeah, yes, exactly.
So, can I just comment that under two A, well, we've got two B, C and D. C and D should just be subbullets of B.
That could have been a formatting thing. Okay. I'll change the numbering. All right.
So, we have to vote on these now, or?
Um, I can see a clue.
We need it.
Want a clean copy?
Yeah.
Clean copy.
Yeah. I think we could do it quickly next time.
Okay. All right, that's fine.
Can I just ask one question? This, under, um, three A organizational capacity. You said fully staffed town departments, turnover metrics and hiring dashboard.
Mm-hmm.
I get that we wanna close any, um, openings, but there probably is some kind of turnover that's acceptable.
Yes.
So, as long as we're measuring it, I think that's.
These are elements that have been discussed. In, at the, at the personnel board.
Right.
And so, I would anticipate that those are goals that they would help us understand.
Okay.
And yes, there is an understanding that a certain amount of turnover is by design. We have lots of part-time people that come and go every year. Um, but the, the, the longitudinal tracking of. What the sort of attrition rate is versus, and, and there's, um, some demographic. Understanding, I don't know if Jess won't, the way she's.
No, we don't have to. It's okay. I just, where I was going with some of that too was. From a budgeting perspective, you know, in the businesses that I've been in, we've, we never budget fully staffed. So, there's opportunities potentially there. I, not that I wanna get aggressive, but that's an opportunity if we have high vacancies.
Yeah, I think there's a couple of ways to look at that, but, um, when we. Where we don't do that, we also create situations where. Expected work output isn't able to be accomplished. So, there, there's a. You know. Fully staffed could, could be sort of like full employment. Full employment assumes a, a, a certain percentage of, of unemployment.
Okay.
To, to be, to facilitate health return.
Question, how have you handled? Measuring progress on these goals during the year, they have their period of conversations, so.
Yeah.
Two, three times. We pull it out and, and ask ourselves how we're doing against them. Yeah.
Okay.
There's one here on, on the initiate quarterly coordination discussion, school committee.
Yes.
This, this might have been my suggestion. So, that's something, I mean, we have to buy in, I, I assume.
We had a couple meetings last year with them.
We did, they're on capital.
You did capital.
They were capital, yeah.
You know, this year.
A couple of joint meetings.
Yeah, so on that topic, and while we were in this meeting. Um, we, we have been invited. To, uh, potentially attend the school committee meeting that's gonna happen on July twenty-second at five o'clock. So, um, and that's, that's going to be a virtual meeting, but that is. Um, one of the, the ways in which the school committee expects to respond to the, the comments that we had today. So, I, I personally think that, and I know that some of you have also been involved. In, in outreach and dialogue with the school committee. I think that it's important that we do build on that and, um, I wouldn't. And if we're all gonna go, if there's a sense of availability to do that, then we could, um. Notice a meeting so that we can have a discussion as well, but I was gonna save that for the chairs report, but as long as you asked it.
There you are.
So, I, I, I think that quarter, if we're only meeting, you know, if we're only coordinating with the school committee quarterly this year, I think we're maybe underperforming.
I mean, there are the topics other than.
Yes.
This current crisis.
Mm-hmm.
And, and budgeting.
Yeah.
Between crisis and budgeting, there are the topics.
Well, land use.
Land use facility planning.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, I think we need to develop an agenda for, for that and try to, try to build on it. I think the community will, will appreciate that effort. All right, um, so if we're ready to set this aside, um, I hope that what's represented, I hope this next topic is gonna be really quick. The, um, the finalized liaison assignments, as I understand them, did anybody see any problems with that?
Good.
No, good.
Good. Well.
You did?
Okay, great. Unadjusted, we can publish that one.
All right, do we need to vote on that?
I don't think so.
No, I don't.
I thought, I thought that was me getting to use my executive authority.
That's right, it's exactly.
I think that's right.
Okay. Um, so, reach out to your, your committees and, um, just as a reminder, this Wednesday morning, um. July sixteenth, there will be a virtual chairs breakfast. Um, again, because the townhouse is not available, we're, we're gonna do virtual. Where, and you're, you're of course welcome to. where and you're you're of course welcome to attend and and I will um show this and and we'll send it with the the invitation. Thank you. Okay. Liaison reports. Thank you to those of you that are well enough organized to um submit yours in writing. I'm not one of those. Um, anything you you'd care to highlight, Mary?
No, I voted.
Okay, um, Wendy?
No, I didn't, I had a pretty lengthy update on Hanscom. I just wanted to give you guys the details of what was going on there, but um I don't feel at this time that we need to comment on that naval hangar project. I I think it's pretty straightforward. Um, Bedford did comment because of the tax benefit that they'll they'll have from that, but I'm not seeing a big need and I did uh meet with Alyssa and she didn't really feel necessary to comment on it. It's actually more favorable, that particular segment, than what was proposed in the larger agreement, so.
Right. And I jumped over the chair's report and the town manager's report, but we might as well keep going with that. Um, anything on liaison for new form?
It just starts, it's just starting the um uh Wednesday, uh Public Works Commission, Transportation Advisory Commission, um, and the tran- Transportation Management Group or the subset again start talking about meshing.
Oh, good, that's great.
And.
Good, that's good.
Well, that results in modification charges, et cetera. But I think that those interfaces, I'd good to see some wider day. Have to thank both Mark Galis and Andrea. It's all for for getting that going.
Very good, very good.
Good to hear.
Hmm, that's good, it's good news. You know?
Uh, just real quickly on a couple things on the light plant. So um, the middle school solar, uh, there was like twenty eight companies or something that said they were interested in responding to R P. So there was a site visit there last week. And I, as I understand it, we got some grant funding or something to do a second uh bus charger installation.
Yeah.
So um, they're looking at sites.
Great.
For places now, so that's it.
Okay. And for me, I already mentioned that the M C I advisory board meet met earlier today. Um, grappling with, well, first off, generally agreeing that um the visiting report would be released. There are some minor typos that are getting fixed. Um, so we're working on that. We're going to try to extend the um the outreach portion of the agency contract to to cover us through the summer to to do some, do some work on that. Um, it was a pretty detailed discussion. They're gonna meet again on August fourth to try to get to what our sort of roadmap is going forward, because there still is a lot of information. And if you haven't had a chance to to read that report, I suggest you do.
I've got an idea.
Yeah.
Since we're asked, since we're listing gaps of in information from agency, when we just did our goals and we're looking for what are the impact on services for ta- taxpayers?
Yeah.
Isn't that something that they can help us with?
And that was an element of the economic analysis that was done.
But it wasn't always done thoroughly.
Yes, I think that it could could be more thorough. Um, but I think that, you know, at the level of the conceptual plan, it was, it had to be sort of general because you don't know the impact until you have a project.
Um, yeah, I'm just saying that since we've got some funds, we've got a firm that knows how to do that. We want the information. Could we get some kind of modeling about what we're looking for, which is what is the cost services of different
Hmm.
housing development?
So you're suggesting that we ask that as part of the M C I planning or more general?
Yeah.
Um, yes.
That would be useful for the land use working group as well.
Hmm. Okay, I'll I'll work with you to to sort of clarify that last, because we are thinking about whether there would be a uh, you know, a what we call section four A, phase four A, which could involve um, some more planning activities and that and what that scope would be. So that'll be part of the conversation. Um, I should probably mention, just because I don't know, it's been said out loud, but our earmark actually made it through the legislative process. So um, in theory, we have the two hundred and fifty thousand dollars the town meeting appropriated as well as uh two hundred and fifty thousand, it's potentially coming from the state. Um, this earmark process is probably, you know, the 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 governor let some of the earmarks go through, but also said, I'm going to decide later whether they're truly affordable based on an understanding of what resources might be coming from the federal government. So I'd say it's probably less certain and may take even longer and harder, which is why I'm glad that we have the town's own resources to pick up the slack and ca- continue the momentum of the work right now, even as we sort of pursue the parameters and understanding of how we might access those additional funds should we need them to do to do more work on the site. Um, so I'm gonna leave that there, um.
Good, that'd be great, thank you.
Great, and do we have, so on the chair's report, let me, let me circle back to that uh because I did have a couple of items. Um, and we heard, I think we actually heard about some of these um, earlier tonight, but I just wanted to highlight them. The um, we, the Concord Carlisle Human Rights Council will host active bystander training on next Wednesday, the twenty third, from five to eight at Harvey Wheeler, and there was a registration for that. So um, if you are interested, please attend. Um, Shannon, I think we're going to discuss rescheduling the uh the September twenty second meeting. I know we moved the twentys, discussed having that on the twenty third, but Roche Shana is really two days and I think it it really makes sense to get off of that week. So I I wanted you to check your calendars as whether or not going back to the fifteenth or rolling ahead to the twenty ninth might might be a a sen- a more sensible reschedule for that.
September twenty ninth.
Okay. Um, so we'll we'll um, we'll check that out with town stat. Um, and we have a request, and I think I might have sent something about this, that um, for the last week of August, to schedule the next Concord Housing Roundtable meeting, and there were three days that were proposed. And does anybody have a a hard ten and can't do? And that that would be something that um you could plan to attend virtually.
All the states were fine for me.
Twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, I think those are the ones that are timed out in August.
Those are all fine with me.
I prefer the twenty sixth.
Okay.
Uh, no shame.
Okay, all right, so I'll um we'll take that as a, we prefer the twenty sixth. I think I was okay on all three days as well. But um any any date should work. Okay. I was what I had for chairs reports, anything from the town manager?
Good evening, Megan Samuta, Deputy Town Manager. Um, given the hour, I'll I'll be brief, um, but I want to um, remind the board and and the public who's listening about some of our different communication channels, um, if you're not already subscribed. We on our town website, under communications, you can find a list of of different ways to interact with the town. And one of them is um our e-newsletter that is fairly new. I think we're in volume four right now. It has similar content as our general operations report, but um it's kind of a more interactive format. We have metrics and we can see how many people are opening it and be able to track information that way. In that report, um, there, you know, there's a number of things, including an update on cell service, which um we have been working with Verizon and the umbrella to coordinate some site visits at that property over the last month. And the engineering team has been coming um to review the property, take measurements and prepare for construction for infrastructure in the cupola, so that that project is moving forward. This newsletter also has information about Third Thursdays, which is um an economic vitality initiative um in partnership with the Chamber of Commerce and the Cultural District. I think and a few others, I don't want to miss anyone. It's it's a, it's a great group there. There's updates from the police department regarding calls for service and their um Concord Police Youth Academy, which just started for this year. I think they just completed their first week and the second week will start up shortly, and that's been a very positive program. Um, there's information about Peak Energy Days, which you can take a look at. Um, and we also in here note our Civic Concord Podcast, we're still plugging away at that. Like and subscribe. Um, we have, the latest episode is a conversation with Assistant Fire Chief Walter Latta, where he talks about the two fiftieth celebration and some of the planning that went into that. We're also planning a conversation that we'll be recording next week with Public Works Director Alan Cathcart, and we're gonna do kind of a deep dive into the roads program as in another way for um community members to learn more about that vote at town meeting, what it means in preparation for the August election. So stay tuned for that one.
Right.
That was my report, thank you.
Okay, and then this folder reminded me. Um, we did not read the proclamation that was approved earlier in the content agenda for India Day. Uh, but India Day will be celebrated on August sixteenth, even though India Day is the fifteenth um at First Parish. Um, and we had a a request. Would there be somebody that's available on that Friday, Friday, Saturday, August sixteenth? And I think it's in the morning, I I'm afraid I don't know, don't really.
Sixteen.
The time to read the proclamation to the assembled folks.
I might be able to do that, I'm just checking.
Consider it. Um, I think I'm out of town that weekend, it's a Saturday.
If you can't, Wendy, but.
Okay, all right.
If you, if you can't, let me know.
Okay.
Okay, let's go with that.
Good.
And any other? Very none?
My first book, yes. Which meant that you mentioned the school committee in July.
July twenty two, five P M. So that's an invitation to join with them. Um, I believe that this meeting, since it wasn't previously scheduled, will largely involve their response to the to the anti summer.
Right. That's good, I'm glad they're.
Um, if we're, are we agreeing to participate? Yes?
Yes, I'm gonna do everything I can.
We have the CNN debrief that night.
I'm gonna be in Boston.
Yeah, yeah.
That's a five, it's at the exact same time, but you know, course.
I know, good, I, we might, we have another meeting that we're gonna try to reschedule.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
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 Well, hopefully that that can, okay, let's let's notice a meeting for that. Well.
I'm gonna be in Boston, I'm gonna do everything I can to join.
Okay.
For sure. Did we have Elizabeth's, you know, the twenty second?
Oh, good question. No, because we're having one tomorrow.
Okay.
No, we were gonna do a two week cadence and then we had to do tomorrow because uh Russ is on going on vacation, so our next meeting will be the twenty ninth.
Okay.
Okay.
Good, okay, so we'll, we'll take that on.
Good.
And thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Motion to adjourn.